Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Now we can, Anna.
Okay.
Now we can.
Everything okay?
I gave you a thumbs up.
Yep, everything is okay.
Aight.
So the first motion on the floor will be a motion to change the order on the agenda to allow for that emergent motion to come forward before we go into the rest of the agenda. There'll be a second change in order motion to allow for the closed session to occur after the bylaws have been introduced with the exception of Bill number 111, which is the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting. And the third change in order is to allow for the added report related to the report from council in closed session to be considered after closed session.
Okay, so the first one is the motion to suspend the rules so we can allow the electronic participation. I see Counselor Salim moving it, Counselor Lewis seconding. Any discussion? Okay, this is a motion that requires two-thirds support in order to pass. What we're going to do for voting, since this is the first time we're doing it with the electronic participation at the same time, is we're going to have councillors vote as you would normally on eScribe for the voting in the room, and then I'm going to go to the video and I'm going to go in Ward Order starting with seven and work my way through ending with the mayor. Okay, so I'll come to you and then you can say yea or nay on the video call and then we'll know the total votes. Okay, so that motion will be up on the screen. Hopefully everyone is logged into eScribe. Once it's up on the screen, colleagues who are on the video call, I'll be coming to you for your votes starting with Counselor Morgan. So the motion that is up on the screen, I'm going to just read this out and I hope everyone will bear with me in terms of a little bit of patience as we work through. This is so leave can be given to introduce an emergent motion. It's been moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Salim. Voting is open. Once everyone's got a chance to vote here, I'm going to go to the folks on the video. Go ahead. Counselor Morgan?
Yea.
Counselor Lehman? Counselor Lehman? Okay, I'm going to go to--
Sorry, yea.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins?
Yea, and I cannot see anything at all on the screen, just for your information.
Counselor Hopkins, you can't see the other participants in the video call?
I can see them, I cannot see any wording on the screen at all, though.
Yeah, so what we're going to try and do is when motions come up, especially motions that are changed or new that weren't in the package and aren't in front of you in your package, is we're going to try and email those out to everybody so that you can see them in your email, so please check your email when that's happening. I've given you the gist of what that motion is, I appreciate you pointing it out.
Yep.
Just go to the Counselor Hillier.
Yea.
And the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, that motion, let's see the results.
I see everybody, you don't see me, so you don't need to know that I'm in my pajamas or not, that's a secret.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, fifteen to zero.
Okay, colleagues, now we're going to move on to the substantive motion. I imagine I look for a mover and a seconder. Counselor Van Holst, Counselor Lewis. Okay, I'm going to wait for that one to come up on the screen and then make sure everyone on the video call knows what it is, I will give you a summary of that. Okay, this one is a bit longer, it has a different whole series of whereas clauses, so perhaps I could ask the staff to email this if they haven't already to the councillors who are on the video call so they can read it over. Essentially, it's introducing the fact that there is an emergency, there's a number of clauses that have been mentioned, that the province has declared an emergency, that the city has declared an emergency, and that the procedure bylaw is going to be amended to allow for electronic participation of members of council and that that be introduced at today's meeting. Everyone on the video understand what is in front of us? Okay. So the motion is open?
Deputy Mayor, excuse me, it said here, just looking at the attachments that had been sent by Sarah at 4:06, and I have six attachments, can you just, and I've got various items here, can you just direct me to which one this is, please?
I believe it's the one entitled Procedure Bylaw.
Thank you.
Let's let you open that up so you can get your eyes on it. We're going to open the vote here in the room and then I'm going to be coming to the folks on the call, starting with Counselor Morgan. Mayor Holder, have you been able to look at that?
I've not, only because I have several emergent motions here, but the attachments have not opened up for me yet. And they don't seem to want to.
I think what I'll do is I'll have the clerk read it to make sure that everyone is clear, it is a little bit long, so bear with the clerk.
With apologies.
That's okay.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, that the following emergent motion be approved, that the following actions be taken with respect, oh, wrong line. Whereas on March 17th, 2020, a declaration of emergency was made by the province of Ontario pursuant to section 7.0.1 of the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act related to novel coronavirus COVID-19, and whereas on March 19th, 2020, the province of Ontario enacted the Municipal Emergency Act 2020 to amend the Municipal Act 2001 to an act section 238 sub 3.3 and 238 sub 3.4 to permit meetings to be held electronically during an emergency declared pursuant to the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act RSO 1990 Chapter E9, and whereas the Lieutenant Governor has issued order in council 520 sub 2020 pursuant to the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act prohibiting all organized public events of over 50 people due to COVID-19, and whereas the council, the Corporation of City London considers the protection of the health and the safety of the public to be a paramount concern, and whereas the Corporation of City London considers it's necessary to be able to hold council and standing committee meetings electronically during the COVID-19 emergency, now therefore it be resolved that the attached proposed bylaw, a bylaw to amend, bylaw A50 as amended, a bylaw to provide for the rules and orders and procedures of the council, the corporation of the city London, to provide for electronic participation of members of council at council and standing committees meetings during a period of a declared emergency, be introduced at the municipal council meeting to be held on March 24th, 2020.
Thank you very much, Clerk Saunders, I'm just going to go to those on the video and make sure you understand what's in front of us. Mayor, you got it?
Yes, and in fact, I was able to pull it up, I apologize as the clerk was reading it, I have it, thank you.
Okay, so we're voting in the room and I'm going to come to Counselor Morgan. Counselor Morgan?
Yea.
Counselor Lehman?
Yea.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yea.
Counselor Hillier?
Yea.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, fifteen to zero.
Okay, I'm just going to go back to the clerk to make sure we're on track with the motions, next one?
Deputy Mayor, the next motion would be first introduction, first reading of Bill 135, which is the bylaw to amend the procedural bylaw to allow for electronic participation.
Okay, does everyone have a copy of that?
It's attached to the--
Okay, so if you got the motion that was sent to you, it's also attached, the copy of the bill that we're talking about, so we're dealing with the bylaws right now to make the change effective right now, just to be clear about what's going on. Since this is first reading of a bylaw, there's no debate. Counselor Van Holst? No, it's not, thank you. Seconder? Counselor Lewis, thank you. Okay, we're voting in the chambers, I'm going to go to Counselor Morgan.
Yea.
Counselor Lehman?
Yea.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yea.
Counselor Hillier?
Yea.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, fifteen to zero, now second reading.
I just want to check in before we go to second reading, I didn't notice that Counselor Lehman disappeared, so let's just check in on him.
Oof, he's gone.
Okay, I see you wanted a different position on the screen, I appreciate that, Counselor Lehman. We're now at second reading, I will look for a mover. Counselor Turner, seconder. Counselor Kaibaga. There is debate on this motion, I'm just looking to see if there is any. Seeing none, we'll open the vote. I'll go to Counselor Morgan.
Yea.
Counselor Lehman?
Yea.
Counselor-- Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
That brings us to third reading on this bill. I have a mover. Counselor Lewis, seconder. Counselor Cassidy. We're going to open the vote. Just a note from the clerk. It says on the screen, second reading of Bill 135. It in fact should say, third reading. We're going to vote as if it says third reading. And enactment. Okay, we're voting in the chambers. I'll be coming to Counselor Morgan momentarily. Counselor Morgan?
Yay.
Counselor Lehman?
Yay.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to the clerk to see what is next.
Deputy Mayor, we would need a change in order to allow for the change, for the closed session matter to be dealt with at the end and also add a report regarding closed session at the end of the meeting.
I think it might be helpful, Clerk Saunders, if you were just to explain why that will be helpful in terms of the change of order. This is not something that is debatable, but I do-- and it is something that requires two-thirds, and I just want to explain why that is happening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The reason for that is because we have members of council that are attending remotely, and they are now permitted to participate in camera matters. So in order to make it ease for the public and for shutting down our YouTube and other systems and allowing the media to not have to come and go, I'm recommending that you move the closed session to the end of the meeting.
Do I have a mover for that change of order? Counselor Van Holst, seconded by Counselor Van Mirbergin. Again, this is something that requires two-thirds. We're going to open the vote in chambers, and then I'll be coming to Counselor Morgan. Counselor Morgan?
Yay.
Counselor Lehman?
Yay.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, I'm looking to the clerk, make sure we've covered off all the things we needed to do procedurally. Okay.
Deputy Mayor, can I ask a question, please?
Yeah, you're going to have to get recognized by the chair somehow, so we're going to have to figure out a way to do that. Mayor Holder, you're not on the screen, and so I can't see you raise your hand. So perhaps--
Yeah, there is a way to do that, and it isn't readily apparent, again. I know there is one. My only ask is that when the clerk speaks, can she just speak a little louder, please?
We'll work on that. Okay. That brings us to recognitions. And I wanted to start by just recognizing the situation that we're in and how serious that it is. I know that my council colleagues have been doing everything they can. I know the mayor, even though he's in isolation, has been doing everything he can to support the community as we're working through the response to COVID-19. I want to commend our staff, led by Lynn Livingston, the whole senior leadership team, especially everyone who is working in the community control group, which includes not just the city staff, not just the folks who are on the COVID-19 internal team, but agencies and partners who are involved in the emergency response. Their work has really been exemplary, all the way up and down through the organization, at all different levels, both at the city and at our agencies, boards, and commissions. I've been extremely impressed. We are meeting every day, every morning, to talk about the response in the community. And what I can tell you is that in the broader London community, the response has been excellent. You know, I think people are taking it very seriously. The health unit has been excellent in recognizing the severity and being very clear with people about what needs to happen. I just wanted to start by saying, this is a lot of change happening all at once. I understand why people are concerned. I know that families are concerned. People are trying to figure out what to do with their kids home for two weeks. I know the kids themselves are quite concerned about what's going on. And I just want to emphasize, we're going to be able to get through this together. It's going to require us to be patient with each other at times because so much is changing and people are stressed and things are frayed. And it's going to require us to work together in a way that we perhaps haven't in the past. And I think if we approach it with an open mind and that spirit of cooperation, I think we'll get through it no problem. I did want to turn to Counselor Cassidy for a recognition in her role, just as the Chair of the Health Unit. She has a message from Dr. Mackey. And then I'm going to go to Counselor Van Mirbergin, who wanted to recognize something, and then also Counselor Van Holst. And if you have something else you'd like to do under recognitions, please catch my attention. Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor and Presiding Officer. I just want to give an update on the situation that's been provided to me by Dr. Chris Mackey. Currently, what we're looking at right now across Ontario are 503 confirmed cases. There are 15 right now in London and Middlesex, including some that have been acquired locally. There are no deaths in this area at this point. The COVID-19 assessment centers that have been opened are at Carling Heights, Optimist Center, and the Oak Ridge Arena. And they are seeing quite a few people come through. The majority of people are actually driving through, getting assessed in their cars, and then it's determined whether or not they need to come in for a deeper assessment. But the vast majority are staying in their cars, driving through, getting that assessment, and going home. The staff are providing those people with a lot of reassurance as well in this current situation. As you know, all essential businesses have been ordered closed by the premier under emergency powers, and citizens are asked to stay home to stay safe. Social distancing, keeping at least six feet from each other is important for everyone to practice. And that said, social distancing really means physical distancing. So keeping a perimeter of six feet around you is very important, but it's just as important to maintain social contact with people. So you can call people, video conference, keep in touch with your loved ones, and do that sort of thing. It's really important that we stay connected and we support each other as much as possible in this difficult time. As always, please go to the Health Unit website, www.healthunit.com, for more information. I go there probably 10 times a day. It's constantly being updated. It really is very, very good information. I also want to take this time to recognize the outstanding leadership that we have, not just in Dr. Mackey, the Medical Officer of Health, but also the Associate Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Alex Summers, and all of the staff at the Health Unit. They are doing a phenomenal job and truly going above and beyond in this situation. London and Middlesex is extremely fortunate to have the leadership that we have during this crisis.
Thank you. I'll go to Counselor Van Mirbergin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I thought, given the circumstances that we all find ourselves in, that perhaps there may be some room for a pause for some celebratory congratulations. And I'm referring to an event that took place recently at Centennial Hall. Counselor Phil Squire, MPP Terence Kernahan, MP Peter Fragescatos, and myself were basically deputized as official witnesses for the Guinness World Records. And what was this record? Well, it was the most ghost peppers eaten in two minutes. And it was a true champion from London who achieved this stunning achievement. He ate basically a half a pound, more than a half a pound, of ghost peppers. Now, I think it's important that we understand what a ghost pepper is. A jalapeno pepper, they use something called the Scoville heat meter. And the jalapeno is about 5,000 on that scale. The ghost pepper is a million, just to give you some type of calibration here. So he went on, and by the way, the champion's name is Mike Jack of London. This notable champion, Mike Jack, ate half a pound in two minutes, shattering the old world record by over 100 grams. Now, this isn't his first world record. He's had two others. He's had one for the fastest time to eat three ghost peppers. He did that in 9.75 seconds, setting a Guinness record. And then he set the world record for most ghost peppers eaten in one minute, 97 grams. Now, the four of us, as official witnesses, had to sit fairly close to Mike and were all very thankful that he didn't feel the need to regurgitate. And so we're very, very pleased about that. But I have to say, this gentleman can look forward to years of Tums endorsements. And I just want to say, thank you again. You've done London proud.
Thank you for that. I'm going to turn to Counselor Van Holst, and then I see that Mayor Holder has his hand up, so I'm going to go to you next, Mayor Holder. Counselor Van Holst.
There we go. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I just wanted to recognize the great work done in the street-level Women at Work Risk Project. This was the final report released last month. And I think it's really encouraging, both the results and just how much care we're taking for London's most vulnerable. And if I believe if we take that attitude through these tough times, we'll just-- we'll do fine. So, thank you. And congratulations to those who were responsible for this great piece of work and caring.
Thank you, Counselor Van Holst. I'm going to go to Mayor Holder on the call. Mayor Holder, you may be muted, so if you have a great speech going there, you might want to start over after unmeeting. There you go.
It's hard to compete with ghost peppers, but I'll do my best. Deputy Mayor, you made earlier reference to the EOC, and I would like to pay particular tribute to the members who have daily participated in these meetings, chaired by our city manager, Lynn Livingston, and you right beside her every day. We have, in that participation group, senior members of administration. We have the Chief Medical Officer of Health. We have the-- our chief responders, so that would be Chief Williams of the Police Department, Chief Hamer of the Fire Department, Chief Roberts of EMS, our LTC CEO, Kelly Pleschny. We've had the two hospitals represented. We've had Hydro represented and other participants as appropriate. But I have to tell you, the confidence that I have in our city's ability to deal with this crisis, to me, has been accentuated by the commitment that all of these individuals have shown. I'm exceptionally proud of them, and I think they're absolutely deserving of the kind of recognition that I'm referencing this afternoon because the kind of commitment they've made and the outcomes that are coming from that saves lives. And certainly, Londoners' participation in the efforts to thwart and limit the potential of this pandemic has been certainly improved by their response. And so certainly to our EOC, thank you very much for the heart and soul and commitment that you've all made. And to Lynn and to Jesse, a special tribute and thanks.
Counselor Squire?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I just want to speak out about the matter of the London Transit Commission, the work they've done so far. And first of all, I want to really give a shout out to all of our drivers and on-bus personnel as you can appreciate having to do that job every day. On a normal day is a tough job, and you can just imagine how much tougher it is now. I also want to thank Ms. Pleschny and her staff for the work they're doing and the reports that they're giving us that we can then pass on to the public and keep the public very aware of what is happening. We made the choice as a commission to keep transit running, but along with that, to keep our drivers safe. And to do that, we've made some tough decisions, but I'm satisfied they're the right decisions. And moving forward, we'll do what we can to make sure we keep transit moving. We'll make sure that the staff at London Transit is safe. But lastly, I want to ask for the public, I know there's always an issue about social distancing, and I've received lots of emails about social distancing on a bus. And I just want people to remember that at the end of the day, it's up to each of us as individuals to social distance, that a bus driver on a bus isn't going to be the arbiter of what social distancing is on a bus. So I ask you all to look out for each other, keep the social distance. But, and if you do that, we'll keep the buses running.
Well said. In terms of any other recognitions, I'm just looking to see, looking on the video. Okay, I don't see any. I think that brings us to confirmation and signing of the minutes. Have a mover for those? Counselor Kaibaga, seconded by Counselor Turner. Any discussion? Just looking on the video. No? Okay. I'm going to open up the vote in chambers. I'll be coming to Counselor Morgan soon. Counselor Morgan?
Yay.
Counselor Lehman?
Yay.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, we have five communications that need to be referred to the appropriate places in the agenda. Do I have a mover for all five? Counselor Pelosi, seconded Counselor Van Mirbergin. We're going to open that up for voting. I'll come to Counselor Morgan soon. Counselor Morgan?
Yay.
Counselor Lehman?
Yay.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, that brings us to motions of which notice is given, of which there are none. That takes us to committee reports. And I'm going to call on the committee chairs to present the reports as usual. If we could be very concise with the summary of what happened, if there is any summary at all, that would be helpful. And I look to see if anything from the planning report needs to be pulled. Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I will put the planning report on the floor. I did have a question on one item, and it was a legal question, so I'm not-- so I'll first see if there's any other items that anybody wants pulled from the planning report.
Going to check in with folks on the video call. Anything from planning that you'd like pulled separately? I see a lot of shaking heads. Mayor Holder? I'm going to take that as a note.
No.
Perhaps we'll separate that item, Counselor Cassidy, and then we'll deal with everything else. It's number eight, 3.2, the village green. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so we're going to have a motion to do everything except for 3.2, Part Eight, moved by Counselor Cassidy.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I just want to make one comment on one thing, and it was one of the public participation meetings that we had. It was number 11 on the council agenda and 3.5 on the committee report, St. 84 to 86 St. George Street and 175 to 197 Ann Street. It was a PPM, but it was just for information. We didn't actually have an application before us for rezoning amendment or an official plan amendment. It's an ongoing project that staff are continuing to work on with the applicant, and they just came forward to give information on what kind of project they're envisioning there. So we had a PPM. There were a number of people that have concerns with the proposed project, but we're not at the decision point yet.
Thank you. I have Counselor Hopkins on the speakers list. Go ahead, Counselor Hopkins. Go ahead, councillor Hopkins.
I was just going to second.
I think just because it's being moved by the chair, we're okay without a second.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
I appreciate the assist. Okay, any other discussion about those items, colleagues? If not, we're going to open the vote, and I'll be coming to councillor Morgan soon. Councillor Morgan?
Yay.
Councillor Lehman?
Yay.
Councillor Hopkins?
Yay.
Councillor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Did you get that yes from me?
We did now. Thank you.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Okay, that brings us to that item that was pulled. This is 3.2 or eight, the 699 Village Green Avenue. Councillor Cassidy, what I'd like to suggest is you ask your question, and then we do have legal counsel who's on the phone, and if they can answer your question in public session, perhaps they will.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So my question is around the, like, the subject of right-of-way. So this is, this is, what, what came before us was an application for rezoning of a property. And the property was, has been a commercial property for a number of times. I think we, we approved some expanded use. But traditionally, this park is sort of the donut hole in the middle of a donut of, of residential homes and properties that surround it. There's only one access point into a neighborhood, but there was a longstanding allowed use through the parking lot of this particular commercial property. And it was so ingrained in the community and accepted as the, as the, as an access point to this park, that the city actually built a, a path within the park that leads directly to this parking lot. So the new owner of this property has put up a fence, and they don't want this, this access to continue. The city has even gone in and removed this pathway, I believe. So my question to legal is, does the city not have any kind of legal rights, considering that this was an accepted access point to the path for, I think, 20 years? For a very long time, anyway. And so the park staff have just said, well, this is, this is private property, and we can't tell them what to do. But I, I think there are some examples in the past where longstanding use has been sort of an accepted right-of-way. Can I, I wonder if legal can answer that?
Mr. Card, I believe you're on the call. If you could unmute yourself and then weigh in?
I am now unmuted, I hope. Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, good. In the past, it was possible to make a claim for an easement on the basis of use. It required a minimum of 20 years. This park was not created until approximately 1982. It was at, at least 1982. And under the rules that existed until 1994, there was a requirement for 20 years of open, undisturbed, and notorious use. However, since 1994, the land has been registered in land titles. Those kind of claims, prescriptive right claims, are not permitted under the land title system, and so for practical reasons, it would not be possible to make that kind of claim.
Thank you very much, Mr. Card. Any other debate on this item, colleagues? If not, councillor Cassidy, are you willing to move it? Seconded, councillor Van Meerebergen. You want to speak to it? Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, this park falls in my ward, and obviously, being private property, having the previous owners allow for several years the, the free access, as it was a variety store at the time, they, they felt that it was actually beneficial to their land usage, their zoning. And so this carried on for, for many years, and so it just became part of the fabric of the community. And so when it changed hands, and there was no hearings or any public meetings, because it was, at, at the time, the same zoning, so it didn't require anything but a, an exchange of private land, it was basically a surprise to the community as a whole that it could be closed off, and it was. Now, my understanding, speaking with the current owner, there was vandalism that took place after he did significant upgrades to the property, and he was advised by legal counsel that he was actually opening himself up to some legal ramifications. So he decided to seal it off. We are talking with him, and we're having constructive conversations about how we can resolve this so that everybody can win in this situation. So that's where it sits at the moment, and I just wanted to give that update.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, we'll be opening the vote. Okay, I'm going to be coming to you soon, councillor Morgan.
Yay.
Not quite yet.
Oh.
It's okay.
It's okay. Okay, councillor Morgan, go ahead. Now if I vote differently, everyone would be confused. I'll still vote yay.
Councillor Lehman?
Yay.
Councillor Hopkins?
Yay.
Councillor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Mayor Holder's muted again.
Mayor Holder, you're muted right now? Mayor Holder, you're still muted. Thank you.
Sorry for that.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
That brings us to the sixth report of Corporate Services Committee. I'd like to call on councillor Kayabaga to present the report from the committee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was not present at this meeting, so I'll call on Vice Chair councillor Van Holst to present the report.
Excellent point. Councillor Van Holst?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, there was only one item where, and that would be item nine, 4.3, where the committee didn't vote unanimously, so perhaps I'll pull that one and put the others on the floor. This was a fairly brief meeting, for the most part, although we had a very important discussion about proclamations. And so there was a lot that was hashed out during that time.
I have an indication from councillor Squire that he'd like 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 all separately, so I'll just look to see if there's anyone else on the, on the call. I don't see anything, okay? Okay, so everything except 4.1, 4.2, 4.3 is being moved by councillor Van Holst. Any discussion on those items? Okay, we're going to open up the voting, and then I'll be coming to you soon, councillor Morgan. And now would be a good time to start unmuting.
Yay.
Councillor Lehman?
Yay.
Councillor Hopkins?
Yay.
Councillor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder? Thank you.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Mr. Chair, I'll put 4.1 on the floor, item seven.
Okay, this is the proclamation for Guru Nanak Mission Society. I'll just look for your comments. Councillor Squire?
I understand that we're in a period where we're running a pilot program as to proclamations, but I had the chance, and, and I started reviewing the applications that, that were in front of us. And I have to say that I, I think they're all great organizations, that they all have merit, and I'm absolutely fine with that. But as a councillor, I'm not prepared to enter into what is effectively an adjudicated process on who's going to get a proclamation, who's not going to get a proclamation. Now, some people may say, well, it's just a sort of administrative function, you rubber stampage, you approve them, but that's not the case. There's criteria, there's rules in place. So I'm either going to undertake that role and, and in fact be judging people as to, should you get a proclamation, or should you not get a proclamation? I can say that I'm not prepared to do that. I think that's going to get us into difficulties, whether it's a pilot period or not. So I don't want to enter into a long debate. I just think for me, as a councillor, and how I view my role, my role is not to make those kinds of decisions. I don't think they're, they're helpful to the community, and so I will just be voting no on all of these, understanding full well that these are very good organizations, doing good work in the areas that they're doing, but I just, this is not the process that I think is proper for having the kind of recognition that they deserve.
Any other discussion on 4.1? Looking to folks on the video. Okay, I don't see any. We're going to open the vote. Oh, sorry, councillor Lewis, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I just want to, to rise and share with folks that I share councillor Squire's concerns on this. I'm going to support, in fact, on all three votes, these organizations, because I, I think that, you know, they've made reasonable requests under the pilot project we have, but this continues to be a, a concern that I have about the pilot project. And I think that when the pilot project comes to an end, before we make it a permanent addition, I, I think that there's clearly already, from the applications we've received, either some process improvements that we need to do, or we need to ask ourselves, is this really the business that we need to be in? You know, we had a number of recognitions at the start of the council meeting this evening. I continue to think that that's the more appropriate place for councillors to rise and recognize an organization that's doing good work in the community or without. But because these applications have gone through the process, because they have been recommended by our staff, I will support them tonight, but I continue to have some serious concerns about having a proclamation process in place right from the beginning.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mayor Holder, who's raised his hand on the video call. Mayor Holder?
Thanks very much. I want to make sure I've got my mute off. Are we good?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. We have three proclamations that are under consideration right now. I can leave it to the clerk and, and may ask her to point out the specific points of what we have passed in council in terms of the role of council, which basically is to do exactly what, what councillor Squire doesn't want us to do, which, again, I'm, I understand that, you'll recall my earliest views about proclamations and the challenge that they may well get us into. I will have an issue with one of these proclamations. I'll speak to 4.3 later, but, but specifically, it's certainly not only within our mandate, but it's, it's our obligation to do exactly the process that we're doing now as we consider all proclamations. And I think it's the, I, I think when you look at the terms of reference in terms of our role and responsibility, I think it's the, it's fair to say that the clerk does the initial vetting from the standpoint of reviewing the application, ensure it's complete and so on, and then forwards it up to us. But I might ask through you, Deputy Mayor, if the clerk can just clarify, under, under the, under the bylaw that was passed in terms of our role with regard to proclamations, and that way we don't circle around this argument each time, because whether we like it or not, it's what we approved, and I think it's totally within our purview based on what we had approved as, in council in, in a prior, in a prior discussion. So through you, may I first ask the clerk to come back and remind us of what our role and responsibility is as per the bylaw?
Mayor Holder, I'm, I'm just going to intercept that. I think everyone is quite familiar with the policy, and I think we, we all dealt with that. I think at our last meeting or the one before that, it's, it's very fresh in our minds, and I think everyone is, is familiar. What we have here is a disagreement about the policy, and, and I don't want to rehash the policy discussion. What I would prefer to do is deal with the matters that are in front of us, which is to vote on either declaring or not the issuance of these proclamations. So we're right now on the Guru Nanak Society one. I'd like to focus on that and keep the comments to that. I understand some people are going to have to refer to the policy to explain why they're voting which way, but I'd rather not rehash the policy discussion. I think everyone is familiar. I see a lot of looks of knowing, understanding in the room, so I, I'm not going to have the clerk weigh in on it.
Deputy Mayor, if you saw me nodding, you would say, you would know that I also agree that there is an understanding, it's just that when I heard the councillor speak earlier, it's clear that, that it's, it's absolutely within our purview and our responsibility to do that. So I'll leave that there, and I have no other discussion or comment on this particular proclamation.
Councillor Squire, recognizing that you've already spoke on this item?
I want to clarify the mayor's comments. I think they, they-
Councillor Squire, a point of clarification?
Yeah. If the mayor's point is that I don't understand what we did, I do understand what we did. I disagree at this point with it, and I'm not going to exercise my jurisdiction. And so I hope, and I assume, he wasn't suggesting I didn't understand what the policy was.
That is a point of clarification, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, and it does not require a response. I think everyone understands what's going on here. I think the points have been made, and I'm, I'm-
Thank you. I'm done.
I'm going to go to councillor Kayabaga.
Thank you, through your chair. I'm very excited to see that people are starting to apply for proclamations. It's been a while since we received any applications around proclamations, and it's still a pilot project, and I don't think that this is the right space right now or today to discuss what we're going to do in the future. But I'm happy to see people applying. I've been encouraging a lot of people in the community to continue to apply. We've put out a, a policy to, for that, so that people can enjoy it, and a lot of people did weigh in on, on, on proclamations in our community, and I'm happy to see this go forward, and I, I would encourage everybody else to support it. It sends a great message. And I went through the applications and read, you know, whether they understood the policy, whether they were reading, whether they were properly applying, and, and I continue to encourage people to reach out to, to different, to their councillors if they need support, or to me, myself, I'm happy to support people in understanding the policy and, and the application process as well, which will also make it easy on the, the administration. But I'm happy to move, I'm happy to see this proclamation application, and I support it, and I hope that my, my colleagues will also support it so we can move forward.
Okay, I don't have anyone else on the speakers list. I'm going to open the vote, and I'm going to be coming to councillor Morgan soon. Good time to unmute. Councillor Morgan?
Yay.
Councillor Lehman?
Yay.
Councillor Hopkins?
Yay.
Councillor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion pass, fourteen to one.
That brings me to 4.2. This is the issuance of proclamation, GBS CIDP Foundation of Canada Day, moved by councillor Van Holst. Seconder? Councillor Pelosi. Any discussion on this one? Seeing, oh, councillor Van Holst, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Helmer. Only speaking to this one because I'm actually mentioned in it. Regardless of someone's applied for a proclamation or not, it's always an opportunity to do advocacy work in our, in our community, and if you don't put in the, for the policy to get it. For myself, I just want to mention to the community that this one speaks to GBS and CIDP. My son's life was saved with a plasma donation, and Canadian Blood Services is still open and deemed as a safe place to go in accepting plasma and blood and platelet donations at this time, so if you can donate, please go out and do so.
Thank you very much, councillor Pelosi. I will just notice, people are looking for refreshments. I believe there are cups in the hallway, and you could get some tap water from one of the washrooms, I suppose. Just make sure you're being safe when you're accessing the taps. Okay, no further discussion? We're going to open the vote, and then I'm going to be coming to you, councillor Morgan, Councillor Morgan?
Yay.
Councillor Lehman?
Yay.
Councillor Hopkins?
Yay.
Councillor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 14 to 1.
Brings us to item 4.3. This is the issue of proclamation for the amputee coalition of Toronto. Just going to check with councillor Van Holst. Are you willing to move that? Or would you like someone else to move it?
I did support that at committee, so I can't put that on the floor.
I'll look for a discussion. I know Mayor Holder, you indicated you wanted to weigh in on this one. You might want to unmute if that's still the case. Councillor Lewis, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to share with colleagues that after committee passed this, I, and I understand that there was some concern about this coming from an coalition out of Toronto. I heard from one of my constituents, Karen, who said, please share this with council tonight. We don't have a support organization in London. We look to this organization in Toronto to be our advocates and supporters. She is an amputee herself. And so she said, you know, it would mean a great deal to her personally that we recognize that although this request is coming from an organization in Toronto, there are Londoners who are looking to that organization for support. I, of course, encouraged her to consider in the future, she could certainly apply as an individual Londoner and that maybe the Toronto Coalition could help establish a local branch here. Because I know that one of the concerns was that this was coming from an organization outside of Toronto. So I did promise to share that tonight with colleagues. And I want to rise and do that. So on Karen's behalf and the other amputees in London, I know that this organization out of Toronto is helping provide supports to them.
Can I go to Mayor Holder next?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. The reason that I did not support this at committee was for the very reasons of the rules that were set and approved by this council. And when we looked to the issue of what constitutes, what constitutes a legitimate application for consideration of proclamation, it had to have that very specific local connection. I'm sure we've all reviewed the proclamation application of this group. I want to say, there's no question that any of us would not imagine that it is worthy in its own right. The challenge I have is it doesn't pass any of the standard requirements set out and approved by this council. And I've approved the prior two because of those local connections. And I'm sure there wouldn't be one proclamation consideration in front of us as we go forward through this test, test period, that there won't be some Londoner who understandably will support some consideration of a proclamation like this. But this has no London connection. It has no London organization. There is no London sponsorship of it. And for every practical perspective, I would, I would ask councillors to consider, unless we're prepared to approve every proclamation that comes through regardless, unless of obvious, I'll say racist or hatred related. And this certainly is a worthy organization, but not worthy of a proclamation from London, Ontario. It's a Toronto, it's a Toronto application. Toronto is in the title of the organization. Worthy, but not qualifying for our purpose. I'm voting against it because I don't believe it satisfies any of the requirements as set out by the rules approved by this council. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, we're going to be opening the vote. I'm going to be going to councillor Morgan very soon. Councillor Morgan?
Yay.
Councillor Lehman?
Yay.
Councillor Hopkins?
Yay.
Councillor Hillier?
Nay.
Councillor, or sorry, Mayor Holder?
No.
Closing the vote and the motion carries, 12 to 3.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Van Holst. I'm going to come back to you for the audit committee as well. Can I call on councillor Lehman? And I will say, considering you're on video call, you don't have to stand.
That's a good thing because I'm wearing shorts.
I wasn't going to say anything. I understand that you have some items on the committee report that you'd like to recommend that we refer. And I wonder if you could explain that and then perhaps introduce the rest. And I'll look to colleagues to see if there's anything you'd like to pull beyond what councillor Lehman is going to suggest we refer. So I'm just looking around. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. As you know, with Civic Works, there's a lot of big projects that come through our committee. And with that is attached, big dollars. Two weeks ago, we had this committee meeting and a number of contracts and projects were approved by the committee. But boy, the world has changed fast in two weeks. I've spoken to city treasurer and as well consulted with the deputy mayor and staff. I think my recommendation, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, in light of the changing fiscal world, both, you know, outside of London and obviously within our own city hall, I think we need to do due diligence on these big projects. And speaking to the city treasurer, they are working on planning for the foreseeable future on the financial impact that city hall is going to face. And we're going to deal with that later on with property taxes on the revenue side. So I think it's prudent that we be cautious right now to reexamine approval of these contracts and projects. In speaking to the engineering staff, we don't see any major changes. But I think it's, we would be well advised to look at this with the consultation of our city treasurer and city engineer as how we go forward, not in just the coming months, but, you know, a little long term as well. So what I'm asking council to do is refer it back to a special Civic Works committee meeting where we will invite the city treasurer and our engineers to consult with us on how we proceed. It'll be a special meeting so that we can get this back to council by the next council meeting. So putting no undue delay. Because quite frankly, a lot of these projects that are coming forward are going to be essential for London as we get through this tough economic times that are down the road. It is government spending that usually leads the way out of recession. And I think we are fortunate that we have some big projects on the books that is going to get, kickstart this economy and get us back on our feet after being temporarily put down the mat. So what I'm going to ask council to do is I'm going to name a number of these items and look for a motion to refer them back to the next special Civic Works committee meeting to be held before the next council meeting. Item number four, which is 2.3. I have number five, which is 2.4. Item number six, which is 2.5. Item number 11, which is 2.14. Item 12, which is 2.15. Item 13, which is 2.16. Item 15, which is 2.18. And item 20, which is 2.12. And I'll leave it at that for, to look for a motion to, to refer those back to Civic Works.
So just before I get questions and comments on the idea of the referral of all those items, I do want to go to city engineering and just check about the timing of where this would be referred to. There was some discussion, colleagues, about sending it directly to the next council meeting, which would make it harder to change things if we had to make amendments to the recommendations. Sending it to a Civic Works committee meeting, a special meeting to deal with just those things. If there were amendments to be made, that would make it a bit easier to do that. I just want to check with city engineering about what their preference would be in terms of if it goes to a special meeting of Civic Works or if it goes to council directly. Keeping in mind, we are trying to minimize the number of times we're having meetings and trying to focus our work and also move quickly. So I think it's important to get a reminder of when is the next council meeting, if it were to go to the council meeting, and then what the preference is between the special Civic Works committee meeting or directly to the next council meeting. So perhaps we can hear from city engineering on that?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Terretts, Doug McCrae. My recommendation would be to refer this to the next council meeting on currently scheduled for April 7. We do support the proposal to defer these projects for two weeks. It would give us time to do our due diligence, both internally and with the service providers. However, at this time, we don't anticipate changes to the recommendations. And there is a certain need, needs for various perspectives to keep them proceeding. And proceeding to that April 7 council meeting would be preferred.
Having heard that, councillor Lehman, are you okay with the April 7 council meeting?
I'm on the fence a bit because I did get some, you know, Mr. McCrae did reference these amendments. I think it would be, I would prefer seeing going to committee. It's not going to change the timing because we will be there at city council. I would still prefer to, to see it back to the committee level. But, you know, I will obviously go with what my colleagues would think.
Well, we're going to find out. Right now, you're suggesting referring to committee. So you've heard the information there. The motion is to refer it to a special CWC. Just look to see if there's any comments on that. Councillor Squire?
I was going to rise later in the, to comment on this. And, you know, we're, we're in a situation where things have changed. And I understand that. The people who represent constituents and who hear from constituents and have to respond to constituents are councillors such as me. Discussions that happen, and I, and I did hear councillor Lehman say, well, I've had discussions with this person and I've had discussions with that person. It would be really helpful as we move forward if those discussions, to some extent, involved city councillors. Because I have some, a little bit of difficulty right now at this point, understanding this process. Because what I'm hearing is, you know, we're in very unusual times. We need to refer this back. And then I hear the city engineer saying, well, we're going to refer it back, but there's probably nothing we can do. You know, so I think it's really, it would be really helpful. And this is what I'm looking for as a councillor as I sit here. I've heard a lot of different things going on. I hear them through the media, I hear them elsewhere. It would be really nice if there was a forum or, or something for councillors to be aware of these thoughts, these things. That's leadership. That's coming together as a group in a time such as this where we all know what's on the table, we all know where it's going, and we all know the options. And I'm, I'm having some difficulty, I must admit, in, in hearing things saying, well, we've had chats and this is what we think we should do. I think every councillor should have an opportunity to get that information, know what's happening, know what's being contemplated so we're fully informed going forward. I'm not saying I disagree or I agree. But I think it's very important in a situation like this that we speak as one and act as one. And information is the key to that.
I have on the speakers list councillor Pelosi, then councillor Turner, then councillor Lewis. So let me know if you want to be on there. Councillor Van Holst, actually, I saw you earlier, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. My only question through to staff would be in regards to item 2.4 being the contract award for the Dundas Street Old East Village corridor. It's a $12.5 million tender plus 1.5 for consultation, associated things wrapped up in it. But more importantly, I'm wondering about our timelines. Is this part, is part of the federal provincial funding for the investing in Canadian infrastructure program? And want to make sure that we don't miss out on our timelines because we've, we've delayed or even that in order to get this money, we know we have to put so much in that if this project would be won, we can move forward without, without delaying for nine or two weeks.
Go to city engineering on that?
Doug McCrae here. We are confident whether we delay or proceed tonight that we will be able to meet the funding requirements of the ICIP program to keep those costs eligible.
Councillor Turner? I do see you, councillor Lehman, by the way, you're on the list for a wrap up since it's your motion. Go ahead, councillor Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I'm not supportive of this motion. These are capital projects. So in capital projects, we can either draw loans or we can use some operating funds to be able to support. The capital projects are necessary projects to go forward anyway. I think they're, they are very essential. Councillor Lehman himself had identified how we are going to need to be able to do, continue to operate as a city and provide stimulus to our economy. This is one of the ways we can support that. The municipal government acts a little bit differently than federal and provincial governments. And I think as much as possible, we're not, as I said before, we're not on the operating side of the ledger here. And we're taking a look at if we need to reallocate operating funds, then we might need to do that through emergency measures. Capital works need, need to move forward. And I think the, the risk here is that a delay could end up seeing these delayed well over a year because we would miss the, the tender and contract cycle for the 2020 season. We'd find ourselves pretty quickly in the 2021 season, which is why I believe Mr. McCrae said that we need to get this in front of the April 7 meeting at its latest if we're going to be doing so. So I'm not going to support this at this time. I hope my colleagues don't either.
Okay, I have councillor Lehman on the list to wrap up. But I have councillor Lewis and then councillor Van Holst first. So go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And for all of the excellent reasons councillor Turner just articulated, I'm not supportive of this either. And I look at these particular items and I see some, some very positive projects that might fall into the, for lack of a better way of expressing it, might fall into the nice to haves that could perhaps be deferred a year. But then I look at some of the other ones and, you know, the sewer separation. We, with all of the other things going on, we cannot turn a blind eye to the fact that we need to stop dumping raw sewage into the Thames River. And I'm not prepared to delay two more weeks and potentially miss a window of opportunity to get things secured for that. The expressway bridge rehabilitation, again, thousands and thousands of vehicles travel over that bridge daily. This is not a nice to have, this is a need to have. And that's why committee approved it at the committee level. I'd like to see us move forward on that too. And, and even with the infrastructure renewal at Churchill and Winnipeg Boulevard and Wayvale Street in my ward, I can tell you when the spring rains come, and the spring rains are going to come, Calgary Street is going to be flooded again because we are talking about drainage from 1927 there. This can't wait. This needs to move ahead. So I'm not going to support the referral on this. I think that these are really key projects. And as councillor Turner said, we're drawing from capital on this, not from operating. So I think it's the investment that we need to commit to at this time.
I'm going to go to councillor Van Holst. But before I do that, I do want to see if there's a seconder. And the clerk kindly pointed out in a very gentle way that I had proceeded without a seconder. Councillor Van Holst, seconding, okay. And now go ahead.
Thank you. I would, I would second this just to make sure that we have committee work done at the committee. Although I hope to have the opportunity to speak there if necessary. I would also like to ask through you, Mr. Chair of our staff, they're suggesting also that they would like to see this delayed, I believe. And what's, what's their reasoning for that? Perhaps I don't understand. I'd like to have staff's perspective on why pushing this back a cycle would be helpful.
Going to go to Ms. Livingston.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The reason we're asking for the timeline is that we would like to check with each of the contractors and vendors to ensure that they can deliver on the contract that we're talking about. It's a very unusual time. We just want to make sure that people can do the work. So it allows us the two week period to be able to undertake those conversations. We're in no way interested in delaying important projects. We want to make sure that we're managing our risk as we move forward.
Councillor Van Holst, you still have the floor?
Okay. Well, thank you. That... Well, thank you, that sounds very sensible, and I think it's important we make sure that we're not contracting somebody who, for some reason, cannot deliver. I think the delays that would happen as a result of finding that out would be much greater than just two weeks, so I'll support, I'll continue to support this.
I have councillor Cassidy, and I haven't forgotten about you, councillor Lehman, I'll be coming back to you. Go ahead, councillor Cassidy.
So before I say anything, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is the referral that's on the floor is to a special committee meeting of civic works?
That is currently what is on the floor.
So after hearing from Mr. McCray and Ms. Livingston, I would support what they're asking for, which is a referral to the next council meeting. I won't support a referral to a special committee meeting. As you, I think it was, Mr. Deputy Mayor, somebody pointed out, we're trying to limit the number of meetings that we're having. All of us sit on outside boards, commissions, agencies, and we have seen the scramble to continue to get business done while not meeting in person or limiting the amount of time that we're meeting in person. Every one of us is making a bit of a sacrifice coming here today. This is important, this is my job, I'm here, I'm also one of the main caregiver givers for my 86-year-old father, and it gives me a little bit of anxiety just walking out of my house every time I have to do that. I won't support adding an extra meeting to the timetable when we've heard from city staff that say they want us to refer it to the next council meeting.
Might be an appropriate time to check in on councillor Lehman. Would you like your motion to stand and we can keep going, or do you want to withdraw it and suggest a different way forward?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I was, the same as councillor Cassidy, I was concerned about adding an extra meeting. I actually suggested maybe the next civic works meeting. The only reason I suggested a committee-level meeting was because there was concern about if there was amendments or what have you, that the working procedurally would go smoother at council. Is this my, by the way, is this my wrap-up? Because I want to address some.
Depends, depends on whether you're withdrawing it or not.
Can I, can I change the motion? Do you want me to just withdraw and put a new motion on the floor?
You've already spoken to it, and somebody else could make an amendment.
Well, I'd be open to someone just amending it to the next council meeting.
I see councillor Pelosi doing that and councillor Van Holst seconding that.
Okay.
So I'll go to either of them to see if they want to speak to that, we've already talked about the issue. Councillor Squire on the amendment, yep?
I'm going to support the amendment, since I heard from Ms. Livingston and Mr. McCray, they've greatly clarified the reason for the, when I first heard, it seemed to be the reason for the putting it over was to consider doing those projects, and I heard a lot about money and whether we can afford them. Now, Ms. Livingston raises what is, to me, the essence. If there's a concern about the contractors doing the work, yeah, let's take two weeks to find that out, so I appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Councillor Lewis?
Sorry, on the amendment, I am just going to say very briefly, I, too, will support it for exactly those same reasons. It was not clear to me the reason for staff's suggestion on this. Now that I understand, I certainly think it's prudent that we make sure that the contractors can deliver.
Okay, I'm just looking down the video, make sure, okay. Councillor Lehman on the amendment, go ahead.
Yeah, and this is, I guess, my wrap-up. I'd just like to address a few things. One, delaying this till the next council meeting does not endanger any of these projects. Two, with concerns about discussions outside of this forum, I can assure those, the only discussions were on procedure. I initiated this because of my concern that this was being done in a fiscal responsible manner, given the times that we're in. And I should have been clear, when I said, I didn't mean to drill down to whether the city can afford it or not, I meant fiscally across the board, which was explained by staff in a far better way than I did. I think that's it for the wrap. I just want us to, we're showing leadership here, and we're showing fiscal responsibility with taxpayers' money, and I think that's an important thing that we do. So I hope you support it, and we will get good advice and good counsel between now and the next council meeting.
Okay, I've exhausted the speakers list, I'm looking around to see anyone. No? Okay, so the motion, just to be clear, is to refer the matters that councillor Lehman listed off. Hopefully everyone is following the list of items to the next council meeting on April 7th, so that is going to be a two-week pause while we do some due diligence, make sure that the contractors can deliver on those projects, and then we'll be dealing with the recommendations at our very next council meeting. Everyone's clear on what we're voting on? No more speakers, we're going to open up the vote. I'm going to go to councillor Morgan. Councillor Lehman?
Yay.
Councillor Hopkins?
Yay.
Councillor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. Can I call on councillor Lehman to put the other items from the civic works committee on the floor? And I will say, I appreciate the patience, colleagues, as we work through these things. I know a lot of things are changing, it's difficult. Some of us who are chairing committees, we've got to make sure on the specific things where we're chairing, that we're making the adjustments that need to be made in progress in real time, and it's not easy, so I want to thank councillor Lehman for that. This stuff should be relatively routine if you want to move these things.
I've had no calls put to pull any of them, so I would, without any other, I'll leave that to you, Deputy Mayor, to look for calls for pulling other items before I put the remainder on the floor.
I see two councillors, so I have councillor Hopkins first, and then I'm going to go to councillor Turner.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to, first of all, pull 4.2, which is the elimination of sidewalk construction on Fox Mill Crescent, and I would like to make a quick comment on 2.10, which is the automated speed enforcement update as well. Just a quick comment on that, but pulling the sidewalk on Fox Mill.
Councillor Turner? Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. If I could also have 4.3 or 24 pulled, so in addition to councillor Hopkins, 23.
This is the removal of trees on Camden Crescent? Okay. So everything that's remaining except the elimination of sidewalk construction on Fox Mill Crescent and the removal of trees on Camden Crescent being moved by councillor Lehman? Councillor Van Meerebergen?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If we could, I see 2.1 was already called, if we could pull 2.11 in addition to what else has been pulled?
The area speed limit limitation? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so hopefully the clerks are keeping up with all the changes, we're going to get that up on the screen. So colleagues, in terms of comments, I know councillor Hopkins has a general comment on one of these items, if you have comments, get my attention so I get you on the list. I'll go to councillor Hopkins.
Thank you, Presiding Officer, and I was able to attend the civic meeting, which seems like it happened so long ago, but I would like to just make a quick comment on automated speed enforcement updates. I know there was a clause added that a letter to the province regarding the changes in the legislation changes to deferring the speed enforcement for a year. I was, we are asking the mayor's office to send a letter to the province with the concerns that we have. It was also, as an AMO representative, suggested that I speak to AMO about these changes as well. I would like to ask that when we send letters to the mayor's office request, that we somehow have follow-ups, not only to myself, the AMO representative, but to FCM and also to government relations. I know I spoke to the clerk, but I just wanted to make this comment as we approve this recommendation.
Councillor Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. With respect to the automated speed enforcement amendments, I have some concerns, obviously, with the delay of up to a year. I did have a question, if I could, through you to staff. Are we able to move forward? The motion is to delay for one year, and it's very specific about one year, and we may have answers or information prior to that time or a path forward. Does this prohibit us from moving forward until the lapse of that year's time?
I'll go to staff on the call for an answer.
We, the Ministry of Transportation has identified a 180-day review, so that's a six-month period, and then we're not sure what sort of timeframe after that is for us to receive that feedback and any potential changes. So the one year is an estimation of us to process that information and make any changes and come back with a recommendation to council, but if we're able to undertake those activities in less than a year, we would certainly not delay, and we would bring that forward as expediently as possible.
Thank you, Mr. McCray, and for you, Mr. Presiding Officer, perhaps to the clerks, does this prohibit us from, staff from bringing this forward earlier in the wording of this motion?
For those on the call, we're just having the clerk review the language.
To Deputy Mayor, you would need a reconsideration if it was brought forward before the year is up.
Am I hearing an amendment to change that to no later than a year?
Mr. Presiding Officer, yes, I'd imagine this needs to be kicked out from the body, this is just for comments right now, if that's the case.
Let's get the clerks to do that, and we can work on the language. I'm going to go to councillor Van Meerebergen.
Sorry, I still have one.
On this topic? Okay, so continue on on the other items, go ahead, and then we'll come to you. Yep?
Thank you, my apologies, Mr. Presiding Officer. Just with respect to number 19 and the speed limit implementation, these are generally prudent steps. I do have, oh, I missed that, my apologies.
So that item that councillor Turner was speaking to has been pulled, so on the remaining items that have not been pulled, excluding the one we just talked about, because it's now been pulled, if that's not totally clear, you're with me, you know, yeah. What is the topic you want to talk about?
So I'll be speaking to 2.1 from the civic works, 2.10. Can that be spoken to at this moment, or should that be later?
I think it's still included with all the rest of them, but I'm just going to double-check with the clerks. Sorry, 2.11 is the one that has been pulled. He's talking about 2.1, the advisory committee report, right?
2.10.
2.10. Yeah, that one's been pulled, because councillor Turner just pulled it. Patience of Job in this room, I appreciate it. Okay. Any other comments? Any comments on the video call? No? Okay, so we're voting on the matters that are still in the consent motion, we're going to have to review them when they come up on the screen. I think I will read them out, just to make sure everyone is totally clear what is included. I'm going to be coming to you soon, councillor Morgan, but I am going to read it out before we do that. Okay, so what's in front of us here, I'm just going to use the second numbers, so it's not doubly confusing. So we have 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, 2.14, 2.15, 2.16, 2.18.
Oh. Well, that's just fouled things up even more. Okay, ignore all the things I just said.
So it's everything except what you hear on the screen, see on the screen or what I'm reading? So this is everything in the report except, this includes the things we already referred, is that right? Okay, yeah. So everything except for 2.3, 4, 5, 14, 15, 16, 18, 11, 12, 4.2, and 4.3. Councillor Turner? Those are the exclusions.
2.10 needs to be included in this list for exclusions as well.
Thank you for catching that, we're just going to reopen the vote. Okay, so it's the same thing I read, but with the addition of 2.10. Is that clear for everyone on the call? Yeah? See some head nods? Okay, we're going to be coming to you, councillor Morgan? Go ahead.
I'm just reading. Yep, yay.
Councillor Lehman?
Yay.
Councillor Hopkins?
Yay.
Councillor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Thank you, I heard a yes?
Yes.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 15 to 0.
Okay, I'm going to ask the clerks to help me with this one, I want to start at the beginning with what's left. 2.1? Okay, 2.1, this is the transportation advisory committee report. I don't remember who pulled this one, so I'll give you a few moments to remember yourself, otherwise I'll look for a mover. Councillor Lehman, you want to move that one?
Yes, I'll move it.
Seconder? Councillor Pelosi. Any discussion on the transportation advisory committee report? Sorry, the matter I think we're dealing with is 2.1, which is the second report of the transportation advisory committee, not 2.10, which we will be getting to next. So that's going to be coming up on the screen soon. Stay tuned. Stay tuned.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. If I may, propose an amendment to this, that staff be able to bring any recommendations back to us prior to that year's time, but no later than a year. I think staff had come up with some proposed wording that might accomplish that.
I'll look for a seconder for the amendment. Counselor Lewis, okay? I think this is the one Counselor Van Meurbergen you wanted to weigh in on. So once we've got it moved and seconded, it's up on the screen. We'll go to you on the amendment.
No.
Okay. Maybe after the amendment, we'll come to you on the main. Okay. So that should be coming up on the screen soon, colleagues, and then I will be opening it up for discussion. Anyone want to weigh in on the amendment? I don't see any. So it's open for voting. It's been moved and seconded. I'll be coming to you, Counselor Morgan. Go ahead.
Yay.
Counselor Lehman?
Yay.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 1.
On the main motion as amended, Counselor Van Meurbergen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As I've stated before, this very expensive program is far from certain that we can recoup costs to more or less make this neutral. I think we've got a real situation here where this could turn into a huge expense, not a lot of revenue coming from fines. And I still maintain that we can construct at a far less cost with far more effectiveness and cover a greater range of school zones particularly across the city by using properly engineered speed humps in the school zones. So I think that is a win-win way to go. I think we really are flirting with huge costs here that we're not anticipating. And that has been my position on this. I will support the deferral, but Part B, if that could be called separately like we did at committee, it's coming before separately anyway, if B could be called separately. Appreciate it.
Certainly, it is the prerogative of any council member to have things voted on separately, and we're going to do that. It's going to take a little bit more time. We're going to have A as amended. That's what was amended in the motion that we just dealt with. Once we dealt with A as amended, we'll have B on the floor separately. So Counselor Van Meurbergen and anyone else could vote separately on that. Just want to check. Counselor Lewis, are you okay to support A as amended as a seconder? Yeah. Counselor Lewis. Okay, so up on the screen for voting is item 2.10A as amended. So that's to make it come back a bit earlier than a year would be possible. So that's what's in front of us right now, not Part B. I'm coming to you, Counselor Morgan.
Yay.
Counselor Lehman?
Yay.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 0.
That brings us to Part B, which Counselor Van Meurbergen has to be separated. I imagine the mover and the seconder are okay with moving and seconding B? Yeah? Okay. Any discussion on that? Let's open it up. Just going to wait for it to come on the screen, Counselor Morgan, and then I'll be coming to you. Okay, 2.10B as amended is on the floor. Counselor Morgan?
Yay.
Counselor Lehman?
Yay.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion passes 13 to 2.
Okay, I'm just going to look to the clerk to see what is next. 2.11. 2.11. This is the area speed limit implementation, which is also related to Bill 120. I'm just going to flag that for you because we are going to deal with the bylaws later if you want to vote differently on that. I think Counselor Van Meurbergen was the person who pulled this, so I'll go to him for comments. Anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor Van Meurbergen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. With regard to this, part of this bylaw to reduce speed limits affects arterial roads. And I think that is problematic. I think that is something that we should steer away from. On the other hand, most of this bylaw I can support. My understanding is that it cannot be separated in terms of the bylaw that we're voting on tonight. So I would think that, given the fact that this bylaw encompasses arterial roads to be reduced, I would like to move a referral of this back so that we can separate out the bylaw with the components that pertain to local and connector streets and so on, but not arterials. So we could have a separate bylaw for the arterials. If that could be done, I'd like to refer that back. And I look forward to a seconder.
Just going to see if there is one. I see Counselor Hillier on the screen. I just want to make sure that I go to you. I did see Counselor Van Holst. Okay, Counselor Hillier with the second. A discussion on the referral and only on the referral. Counselor Turner? I hope you'll defeat the referral. That is the kind of concise comment that I appreciate. Anyone else? Counselor Cassidy?
I agree with Counselor Turner that we need to defeat the referral. There are certain sections of roads that are considered arterial and that pass through the downtown. It doesn't include York Street, for example, and it doesn't include areas of these arterial roads once you clear the main downtown core. So the downtown core is where the vast majority of collisions between pedestrians and cars occurs, occur as well as cyclists and cars. So reducing the speed limit in the downtown core is important. We need to go ahead with this and we need to defeat this referral.
I don't have any other speakers on the list in the chambers. Anyone on the call? Okay, if not, we're going to open up voting on the referral. Okay, that's coming up on the screen. The referral says to be referred to Civic Administration to bring back separate bylaws, separating out, distinguishing the arterial roads. So that's what's in front of us. I'm going to go to Counselor Morgan.
Nay.
Counselor Lehman?
No.
Counselor Hopkins?
Nay.
Counselor Hillier?
Nay.
Mayor Holder?
No.
I heard a no?
No.
Closing the vote and the motion fails, 3 to 12.
Brings us back to the main motion. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I hope all of council will support this. I do have some apprehensions with respect to the LTC and its comments on this. I recognize why they're here and it's why I'll support the motion. I travel the bus very frequently and I have an app on my phone and I watch the speed of the bus all the time when I'm traveling, especially on roads that have been identified here. Bus rarely, if ever, gets over 40 kilometers an hour on neighborhood streets. And so I'm surprised that the LTC has come back with the data that it did, but I recognize what's being proposed here as an opportunity to take a look at a little more closely at some of the affected routes and what the true effect would be. So I think that's prudent. I'm just disappointed to see us further the activity here. Sorry. With respect to the speed limits in the core, I have to say, I bring back my paramedic years every once in a while in the chambers and I, actually, when I ran for council, I used those a lot to inform where I stood on policy. One of the things that happened to me earlier on in my career was I was standing at the corner of King and Wellington and I saw a young lady get hit by a car at very high speed. And nothing can prepare you for that. As a paramedic, I often get the call to go and respond to these and I've got three, four, 10 minutes sometimes before I arrive on scene to prepare myself in my head for what I'm going to see. When you're standing there and you witness it, it's horrifying and I couldn't imagine anybody going through that. In this circumstance, when I take a look at speeds downtown, there's no need to be going above 40 kilometers an hour. I think it's quite reasonable that we take a look to curtail them back. On Dundas Place, I think that's even more reasonable to bring that down to 30 kilometers an hour, especially if this is going to be the connector along the east-west cycle link that will be established along Dundas and how it connects to the Thames Valley Parkway. I think these are essential infrastructure pieces and what we can do in that regard with speed. But I also hope that it doesn't stop here. I hope we take a look at using some other methods on top of just the speed limits to help curtail traffic along Dundas with car flow-through and maybe look at something along the lines of what the King Street Pilot did in Toronto where vehicles can travel down that stretch, but only a block at a time, and then they have to turn off the street. Would really help to make a, maintain a pedestrian environment, an active transportation environment for cyclists as well.
I have Counselor Morgan on the call and then I'm going to go to Counselor Van Meurbergen. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question for staff, just so I'm clear. In the report, it identifies that we're not proceeding with the areas identified by London Transit as having a high impact. In the report, it identifies one of those areas as Routes 9 and 31, which goes through my ward along Black Acres Boulevard and Aldersbrook Road. Is that an area that would not proceed with lowering the speed limit if we, with the way that this motion is constructed currently?
Let's go to City Engineering for a response.
Thank you. The lower speed limit is proposed to be applied to Figure 3, the area that includes transit routes 9 and 31. The initial implementation phase that we've worked out with LTC includes areas of low, medium, and high impact so that we can ground test the assumptions that were included in LTC's analysis and get a better understanding of them to inform the future phases. So that is why the, that area of localized but high-impact service is being included and that will therefore inform how we roll this program out in the future.
Counselor Morgan?
Yes, so that's kind of how I read the report. I just wanted to be clear. I would say that I'm very supportive of that. I think it's important to test irrespective of it being identified as a high-impact zone. I would also indicate that along Black Acres Boulevard, there's a large section of that that's already 40 kilometers per hour because it touches a school zone. And so it's really not the full section that would be impacted. And I'll say on Aldersbrook Road, that's an area where I actually get a lot of speed complaints and people oddly are looking forward to that reduction in their speed limit, or their, the speed zone. And so I know there's an LTC route along there. I would agree with Counselor Turner's assessment that I don't think I really, you know, I wouldn't say that it would have enough time with the stop signs to, you know, get up to speed with the stops that are between, but perhaps it does. But I'm very supportive of proceeding because this area is included. I think we actually have to proceed in some areas where there are LTC impacts and this is a good one to test. So thanks to Mr. McCray for clarifying that for me. I appreciate it.
Counselor Van Meurbergen?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The, as I stated, most of this I can support. It is the arterial issue, but it's not possible to separate that out at the moment. So therefore, I will support this. And that's all. Thank you.
Any other speakers? I see your hand is still up in the Zoom, Counselor Morgan, but I think you're satisfied. Okay? I don't have any other speakers, I will say, and Counselor Squire knows this very well as the Chair of the LTC. For those of you who are wondering about the speed of the buses, fortunately, they have automatic vehicle locators in all the buses and they can keep track of how fast they go all the time. And then they can analyze the data to find out exactly what the impacts will be. So we're fortunate that we don't have to guess, that we can actually tell. We're going to open up the vote for that. I'm going to be coming to you soon, Counselor Morgan. Counselor Morgan?
Yay.
Counselor Lehman?
Yay.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you very much, colleagues, for working through that one. I'm just going to look to the clerks to see what we have next. Okay, 4.2. This is the sidewalk on Fox Hill Crescent, I believe. Okay, that was pulled by Counselor Turner. Counselor Lehman, you're moving it. Yeah. Counselor Turner is first on my speakers list. I'll look for other speakers. Okay, I got Counselor Hopkins after Counselor Turner. Go ahead. Okay. Counselor Turner is reminding me that Counselor Hopkins pulled it. So Counselor Hopkins, you go first. The Counselor Hopkins, Counselor Turner, Counselor Van Meurbergen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And the reason I pulled it, I was surprised that we are going to be eliminating the sidewalk with this construction project. I think we've all received a number of emails from residents. I, even though I was at civic meeting, I did not stay for this portion. So I'm a lit, I'm a little unsure why the committee is eliminating this sidewalk with this project. So have no idea why we are eliminating it for number one. So I would like some clarification why from staff. From my understanding, the sidewalk or the construction project is going to proceed most likely in the next couple of weeks because they have to remove all these Councillor Morgan?
Yea.
Councillor Lehman?
Yea.
Councillor Hopkins? Councillor Hillier?
Yea.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you very much, colleagues, for working through that one. I'm just gonna look to the clerks to see what we have next. Okay, 4.2. This is the sidewalk on Fox Hill Crescent, I believe. Okay, that was pulled by councillor Turner. Councillor Lehman, you're moving it. Yep. Councillor Turner is first on my speakers list. I'll look for other speakers. Okay, I got councillor Hopkins after councillor Turner. Go ahead. Okay. Councillor Turner is reminding me that councillor Hopkins pulled it. So councillor Hopkins, you go first. The councillor Hopkins, councillor Turner, councillor Van Meurbruggen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And the reason I pulled it, I was surprised that we are going to be eliminating the sidewalk with this construction project. I think we've all received a number of emails from residents. I, even though I was at civic meeting, I did not stay for this portion. So I'm a lit, I'm a little unsure why the committee is eliminating this sidewalk with this project. So have no idea why we are eliminating it for number one. So I would like some clarification why from staff. From my understanding, the sidewalk or the construction project is going to proceed most likely in the next couple of weeks because they have to remove all these trees for the road construction or for the water main. The trees are gonna be removed regardless if we put a sidewalk in or not. So this decision is imperative that we make it right away. But I want to, you know, there's a lot of misinformation in some of these emails. My biggest concern is that the public may be thinking that we're saving trees, first of all, which we're not, because there is a need for them to come down. The other concern I have is about this petition and about how it does represent the community. I think sidewalk projects, there tends to be a division in the community regardless if you support it or not. But I'd like to, and the other part is that residents are, in their letters are saying that we can allocate these resources to another project. So from staff, I'd like to get verification about the trees coming down and also about relocating these resources for the sidewalk.
Mr. McCray?
Thank you. This project is local road reconstruction and water main replacement. It's primarily driven by the water main. It's a critical need. It's a cast iron water main that has had numerous breaks and alternatives were assessed for replacement and it was determined that the only feasible approach was to excavate the water main, which is in the Boulevard and triggers the removal of the 43 trees. When we undertake projects like this, we do them considering the London Plan policies and complete streets manual. And that was the basis for the sidewalk recommendation along the alignment of the water main. The information was shared at a public meeting and, so the project is proceeding. The tree removals are underway and we will finish the final design of the project in accordance with council direction.
And just as a follow-up to the other question I had, which was relocating resources, if we do not put this sidewalk in, where will they go? The resources? I think the community thinks that we're going to be saving money here or I'm just trying to understand or trying to find a reason why I should be supporting the elimination of the sidewalk.
Sorry, I neglected your second question.
The second question was about allocating.
No, no, I think he heard it, councillor Hopkins. I think he heard it the second time. Go ahead, Mr. McCray.
Yeah, the sidewalk is funded out of the local road reconstruction program. We have a long list of needs. It's part of the transportation infrastructure gap and the funds that would be avoided on this project would be routed to other projects, other local streets across the city.
So if, I assume I'm, I will make my comments now. I, I'm surprised that, I would have liked to have heard the reasons why we're removing the sidewalks with this project, but I would just like to speak from my record as it stands with supporting sidewalks or not. And I know they are contentious in our neighborhoods. I had one a couple of years ago. And with that, we came up with a neighborhood plan to look at putting sidewalks in the neighborhood to make it safe for the community, the best routes to take. And we just had another meeting with another community in Byron to again, look at the neighborhood and look at what's the best plan. But we're looking at putting in sidewalks. We're not saying that we shouldn't be putting sidewalks. I have supported in the past not to have sidewalks go in because of the removal of a vast amount of mature trees. And I think every neighborhood has its own importance when it comes to sidewalks. I think we have to look at it a whole, but I'm not getting any information here why we are eliminating the sidewalk with this project.
Okay, I have on my speakers list councillor Turner, councillor Van Meurbruggen, and then I see Mayor Holder on the line. So we're gonna go in that order. Councillor Turner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I am very much against the elimination of sidewalk on this, on Fox Mill. I think this is a really poor direction for us to be heading. The council policy that was established was established for a couple of reasons. One, when we're doing reconstruction projects in a neighborhood, that we do everything all at once so that we don't have to go in again later and spend more money to do the same thing. The second reason was because we have a very strong policy on promoting active transportation. Active transportation includes cycling and walking, moving around in ways other than taking your car. We built neighborhoods a while back that allowed neighborhoods to be built without sidewalks. Our policies now don't allow that and for very good reason. The third reason that council policy goes in this direction is for accessibility. In fact, the Accessibility Frontiers with Disabilities Act specifically with Public Design Guidelines for Exterior Paths of Travel on Section 80.21 speaks to us to say that this part applies to newly constructed and redeveloped exterior paths of travel that are outdoor sidewalks or walkways designed and constructed for pedestrian travel and are designed to intend to serve a functional purpose and not to provide recreational experience. Obligated organizations shall ensure that any exterior path of travel that they construct or redevelop are intended to maintain and meet the requirements set out in this part. When I read the letter that came from the residents on Fox Mill, it talks about losing six feet of their property frontage would severely impact their standard of living. One of the things that gets missed in all of this discussion is the property on which the sidewalk will go is city property. It is not the residents' property. In fact, it's sort of an encroachment on city property in the manner in which that when we get a petition against the sidewalks, I say, well, that's my property. I'm gonna lose six feet of space on my property. I'm gonna lose this much of my driveway. That's not your property. It's the city's property. It's part of the road allowance. And the arguments that I've heard have not been compelling. In one circumstance, I supported the removal of a sidewalk from a project after the estimation of eight trees moved to 25 trees really quickly. When I look back on that decision, I'm not sure it was the right decision. I had a really hard time with that one. But one of the first decisions I had to make as a councillor was regarding Auburn Avenue in Ward 11, which was a connector, a neighborhood connector. And 100% of the residents on that block petitioned and said, we do not want this sidewalk. I said, I don't agree with you. We've got very strong council policies for this mention, the reasons that I mentioned before. I said, I will absolutely make sure that your petition gets in front of this council so that they can decide and you can, you can make your arguments to them, but I can't support it. And every time we take a look at one of these things, it cuts deeper and deeper into our policy. And this isn't a trivial one. It's, they say it's not a connector, but it is. It, it's part of the active and safe routes to school component of the school that's right there. It does connect into, I think it's Steeplechase, and there is a, there's a pedestrian pathway that connects that crescent as well. These are critical components and they have been thought out. The trees are all being lost in this circumstance regardless as a result of the need to rehabilitate the street. I honestly, I think, for lack of a better term, this is very nymphy, not in my front yard. And I'm very disappointed. I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated with the full court press that the residents of this block have pushed on us during an emergency. Right after we declared the emergency, we've received a onslaught of emails from the residents saying, please don't put the sidewalk on our block. I think that was very tone deaf. I'm frustrated by that. So I hope that you don't support this. I think there's, there's quite a raft of reasons why the sidewalk needs to go in. Please reject the committee's recommendation.
We go to councillor Van Meurbruggen and then I'm coming to Mayor Holder on the call. Go ahead, councillor Van Meurbruggen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We had a, quite an extended and fulsome debate on this and we also heard from a delegation from the residents who adamantly do not want a sidewalk. And so when I hear arguments like, I'm not hearing compelling reasons, et cetera, et cetera, overwhelmingly, the reason is, and the overarching, overriding rationale here is that these residents, these taxpayers, for their own short little street, which is, could be called a backstreet, do not want this sidewalk. This is a 50-year-old mature community. And I have to say that the London Plan, in my view, has got it wrong. This is wrong. When you go in and start imposing the will of government onto the taxpayers and onto the residents in a mature area where they've spent decades, where things have worked out well, they enjoy their community, they enjoy the neighborhood, and then we come along and say, oh, you're getting a new water main, now you get a six-foot sidewalk all the way along your street. Why? New homes, yes, makes sense. They're in from the get-go. New people, people move in, they, they see it, they know what they're getting. These residents, over the course of 50 years, and let's face, let's be clear, there's a range between young families with kids and older seniors who spent most of their home-owning life in one home, in this particular street. And overwhelmingly, to a tune of 92.5%, 40 out of 43 homes reached, they don't want it. To my way of thinking, when we're elected, the people that put us here are the people we're supposed to represent and serve. That's the whole basis for our local democracy. I reject, and I think a lot of people reject, this notion that government knows best, take the sidewalk, damn it, you're gonna like it. And no, that's not what they want. They're basically saying, yes, we want the infrastructure rebuilt. We want the water main. We're prepared to sacrifice those trees so we can get a new water main. They understand. They also understand that legally speaking, that extension by the roadway is not their property. But the reality is, and most of us can sympathize with this, if you've lived or if you've been in a neighborhood that's over 50 years old, the extension that the city owns is basically a de facto piece of your property. And now we're gonna come along and put a six-foot wide strip of concrete all the way along this, this small road with very little traffic? It's not right. I'm simply saying, respect the wishes of the neighborhood. Let's go with this motion that's exempting them from taking this sidewalk, which they do not want. As mentioned, it's a short street, it's lit at night, it has streetlights, it's connecting two roads that have sidewalks. I say, let's listen to the will of the residents and uphold the exemption.
We go to Mayor Holder?
You, Deputy Mayor. I was part of the committee and heard the representation and delegation from the community and overwhelmingly, they did not want sidewalks. We have precedent for not having sidewalks in an area that was already referenced by councillor Turner. I want to clarify one thing and that is that their petition and as they approached Civic Works was long before we as a city declared our state of emergency. I just want to clarify that as a point. I'll make it very brief. I support staff recommendation.
Mayor Holder, I think maybe I misheard you there. Are you saying that you support the sidewalk that was recommended by staff or the committee recommendation, which is to eliminate the sidewalk?
I apologize. I, I thank you for clarifying, Deputy Mayor. I, I stand behind the committee's recommendation to not have sidewalks.
Okay. I have councillor Cassidy. I'm just looking for any other speakers. And I will say, I know we have up to five minutes. I appreciated the mayor being quite concise there. If we could focus the comments, that'd be wonderful. Councillor Cassidy?
Thank you. I think it is important to put the sidewalk in here and I've, I've usually supported sidewalks. I think the first time I voted to allow, to eliminate a sidewalk from a project was on the Runnymede Crescent one and that was the first time ever, I think, on council. We've, I've had sidewalks go in in my ward and I've worked with the residents who, and worked with staff to, to try to save as many trees as possible. But again, there was a high school, it was a direct route to this high school and it was imperative that this sidewalk go in. High school kids especially, they tend to walk in the middle of the road if there isn't a sidewalk. But some of the reasons for the sidewalk in this, in this particular instance, there are two courts as well that connect into Fox Mill Crescent. None of the residents of these two courts signed this petition. There are like 29 homes that live on these two courts. They have to walk on Fox Mill Crescent from their courts to get to school or anywhere else they're walking. They have no other choice. That's their only walking route to get to Fox Mill Crescent and then get out of the crescent. There is, as councillor Turner pointed out, a pedestrian pathway directly from Fox Mill Crescent to the school. If the, if you, the, the resident, it wasn't like there was a huge number of people that came out and spoke to the committee. There was one resident that presented his petition to the committee. He was, sorry, I'm backtracking here. So this, this, this pedestrian pathway has a pedestrian crossover or there would be one, this is what staff told us, a pedestrian crossover because the sidewalk will be on the opposite side of the street from, so you have to cross the street to get on this pathway and then go directly to the school. So as councillor Turner also pointed out, this is part of an active and safe routes to school. There is a significant traffic problem on Steeplechase, which is the street directly in front of the school. It's, it's busy, it's congested. There are parents dropping their kids off and picking them up. There is a plan to eliminate or severely limit parking on Steeplechase. As part of the active and safe routes to school, they would like to see cars continue onto Fox Mill Crescent, drop their kids off there, and then the kids will walk on Fox Mill Crescent and get to the school that way. So it is a direct walking route to the school for these kids heading there. The parents who live on the streets that, in the area, say how unsafe it is right now because of the car traffic. And in fact, one of the, one of the people that wrote to us, I don't know if you noticed this, at least one of the people that wrote to us asking to not have a sidewalk, said, yeah, traffic and speeding is a problem on Fox Mill Crescent, so instead of that, let's put in some speed bumps. Instead of having a sidewalk for the children to walk on safely, let's put speed bumps on our road to slow the cars down. That's completely contradictory to what the rest of her letter was saying there. I've also been told that Halloween events are limited in the neighborhood because the parents don't feel safe with their kids walking where there is no sidewalk. I've also been told by at least three residents that signed the petition that they felt some pressure when they, when one of their neighbors came to the door and asked them to sign this petition. And this is why we don't govern by petition. If there was a way to give your opinion and your vote anonymously, that would be something completely different. But to have your neighbor in front of you, asking you to go along with what everybody else is doing, there's a lot of pressure in those situations. And I have been told directly that people felt pressure to sign this petition. Finally, there were a number of people that wrote as well that did sign the petition freely and they, they attended the public meeting or they watched it on the livestream and they listened to the debate. And they said very specifically, because of the safety issues that were raised, they changed their mind and they no longer agreed with the position of the petition. So I would urge this council to vote against the recommendation that's coming from the Civic Works Committee.
Okay, I have councillor Lewis and then I'm gonna be going to councillor Morgan on the call and then councillor Pelosi. Go ahead, councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one is one that I am still weighing and listening to the debate here on very carefully. This one is one that I am still weighing and listening to the debate here on very carefully, because there are excellent points on both sides. Absolutely, the local neighborhood opinion should and matter, and I certainly hear the ward counselor speaking out on behalf of those constituents, and, and just as I speak out for my constituents, I think it's very important to listen to what he's been hearing from residents on this. I also recognize that we want to take full advantage of the opportunities when we do go in and do a road rehabilitation to the extent that we're doing here, that we do everything at once. And that neighborhoods do change, and 10 years from now, if this street has a plethora of new families who want a school from the sidewalk, they're gonna be at the bottom of the list. And it is an extensive list. I, I know it is, because I've looked at where some of my ward streets are on the list, and some of them are gonna be waiting a while. I do appreciate the point that we could reallocate some of these funds to get another street done sooner, but I'm cognizant of the fact that neighborhoods change and that this might just end up being back on the list later. There are problems with school zones all across this city, usually caused by parents who are driving their kids to school instead of letting them walk in the first place. So I am concerned about the safety in the neighborhood as well, and when I hear about Steeplechase having a no parking zone, I wonder if neighbors on Fox Mill are aware that there may actually be increased traffic coming. But through you, to staff, Chair, I'd, I'd like to ask, because we've heard six feet several times. And I actually went out and took a look at my sidewalk in front of my house before I came down today, and I'm on a collector, so lots of pedestrians. My sidewalk is not six feet in width, and concrete is not good for the environment, so why are we going with such a wide sidewalk here? Through you to staff, and would there be other options that would be less impactful?
Go to Mr. McCray about the width of the sidewalk as designed and the justification for that.
To minimize the impacts to the properties, the sidewalk is being located adjacent to the curb, so immediately, right up against the road. Our standard width for a sidewalk at that location is 1.8 meters, or six feet, and that is one foot or 0.3 of a meter wider than the minimum, and that is to account for snow storage in the winter, and also for pedestrian comfort with the closer proximity to the street.
I just want to clarify, Mr. McCray, if the sidewalk was located further into the boulevard, closer to the homes, you'd go with 1.5 meters instead of 1.8 meters?
That's correct. A more standard or typical design would be a 1.5-meter grass boulevard, so five feet of grass, and then a five-foot, 1.5-meter sidewalk, if it was, you know, set back at that distance.
Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, and thank you for interjecting with that clarification, because I, I was gonna follow up with that as well. But I did hear Mr. McCray talk about snow storage, and that brings up my other two questions. With a sidewalk that's curb-facing like this, with what we are talking about with improved snow removal on sidewalks, how does this impact road snow removal versus sidewalk snow removal? It seems to me like we might be plowing more snow immediately onto the sidewalk if it's curb-facing, and then creating extra work for our sidewalk plows. And likewise with garbage collection, if it's curb-facing, there's no boulevard to leave the garbage on, so then we get the potential of the sidewalk being blocked by people putting out their garbage on garbage day. So from an operational standpoint, how does the snow plowing and garbage collection work when we have a curb-facing sidewalk like this?
Mr. McCray.
The design of these projects is context-sensitive, and we're, we try to do, balance off the operational needs with the desire of the neighborhood, and that's the basis for the design that's proposed. You are correct, there are some operational issues, but that is the rationale for the slightly wider sidewalk when it is behind the curb, and we've found that that is able to operate in an acceptable manner.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to Counselor Morgan, and then I'm coming to Counselor Pelosi. Counselor Morgan.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. McCray. It was indicated in part of the debate that there was an active and safe routes to school connection to this particular sidewalk. I've been part of lots of active and safe routes to school, school travel plans, they included community consultation, walkabouts to identify areas of concern. I just wonder if you can comment on whether this was identified as part of a school travel plan? Was it included in, in that consultation process through the school community that, that active and safe routes to schools usually have? And any other information on that aspect of it that you can share that would be helpful to me?
Mr. McCray.
Sherwood Fox Public School, which is located on Steeplechase Drive, does have an active and safe routes to school committee. They, they were created, they created a school travel plan in 2018, and like most of these plans, it includes a variety of initiatives, and one of the concepts that was being considered was to reduce congestion in front of the school, both congestion and student safety, to try to divert some of the traffic to Fox Mill Crescent and, and have the students walk via the pathway between the two streets.
Just further to my question, what I wanted to know is, was this particular sidewalk identified in a school travel plan as one of the, one of the initiatives during either a walkabout or during that committee process? I just want to be clear on that.
Mr. McCray.
The sidewalk concept, I do not believe was known at the time of the walkabout. I didn't personally participate, but from looking at the plan, it identifies the pathway between Fox Mill Crescent and Steeplechase Drive, so it was identifying an opportunity there of which the sidewalk was seen as a further enhancement and support for that plan.
Counselor Morgan.
Okay, thank you for that, that's, those are my questions. I ask them because the active and safe routes to school program is something that I've engaged in, in my community. I wanted to be clear on, on what aspects of this were discussed through that process, because I know that certainly in my own ward, I've supported projects where the school community has identified it as a concern, and where they were working through those sorts of solutions. But I've also been supportive of working with the community on places like Louise Boulevard, where a sidewalk needed to go in, it needed to be on the curb. And to Counselor Lewis's questions, it seems like the, the snow removal and the pickup of garbage and recycling worked, worked quite well on Louise. I've had no residents' complaints. Now, that sidewalk was very contentious, and what we ended up doing was finding a solution that actually worked for the community by not locating it up near their houses, but out on the boulevards. In that case, we actually narrowed the street because it was identified as needing some traffic calming aspects as well. So I guess my final question for Mr. McCray is, in the design of that sidewalk, was the street width at all examined in, to minimize the impacts on, on any trees or properties? Or was this not a street that was able to do what we did on Louise, and that's narrow the street a little bit for, for some additional traffic coming there, and, and maybe ease some of the concerns?
Mr. McCray.
The, the street is currently of a width that if it was narrowed further, we would have to eliminate on-street parking. So the decision was made to maintain the current width, and that made no difference as to tree impacts.
Okay, I appreciate the answers to the questions.
Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And to Counselor Morgan, it's an excellent, excellent leeway into my question, as it built on his. Does that road allow for on-street parking on both sides of the street, or just one? Also concerned about the potential for narrowing to avoid some of these concerns residents have.
Mr. McCray.
I believe it's on-street parking on both sides currently.
So wondering if it's possible, what it would look like if residents had parking on one side of the street only, and then the sidewalk could just be allotted into the current road width allowance. Is that a possibility?
Mr. McCray.
A narrowing of that manner would likely cause operational issues with two-way traffic.
Okay, thank you for that, and building upon Counselor Cassidy's question earlier, also having read all the resident emails that have been coming in for, for weeks, just not the last few days, and concerns with Fox Mill Court and Fox Mill Grove having felt that they've had no voice in this conversation. Question through you to staff, when we do traffic calming on streets for installation of the speed cushions, there's always a petition that goes out. What could we do in a situation like this that residents aren't feeling intimidated by neighbors door-to-door that it's, and to save these conversations at committee and at council as they've been coming up, this is three sidewalk petitions within the last two Civic Works meetings that we could do to implement when we're looking at installing sidewalks, that residents can have a question from the city of, "Do you support this?" And we could hopefully avoid these lengthy conversations going forward. Is there something like that we can implement?
Mr. McCray, I'm gonna call on you to answer the, the question briefly, if you can. I'm conscious that we're dealing with a specific sidewalk here, and there could be a broader discussion about the policy and how we're consulting residents about sidewalks, which we could have a committee, but just a brief answer in terms of what could be possible.
With, with traffic calming, these are more community-driven initiatives, we're very cognizant of this concern, and we, the city leads the surveys when they happen to avoid this, this concern. Implementing a sidewalk in complete streets, in a complete streets mode and following policy is not typically subject to a neighborhood survey. So there was no survey initiated, and the information was simply shared at a public meeting, at which time we tried to refine the design, but not change it in sort of the manner that's being considered tonight.
Just look to see if there's any other speakers on this issue. Counselor Van Mierbrink, I already had you speaking. Counselor Van Hols, you wanna go? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. As I, as I look on Google Maps at this area, I see that probably in quite a few of the driveways will be cut down from being able to have two cars to one car, or maybe four cars to two, two cars. So that may mean quite a bit more parking on the street. And so I'm wondering if staff might, might comment on that. They were suggesting that the, if the street were made a little more narrow, that there'd be operational problems. But are we gonna see a challenge with more parking having to be on the street?
Mr. McCray.
The impacts to each individual resident is very specific. The street is currently wide enough for parking on both sides. It, you know, in fact, on-street parking can provide traffic calming benefits, so we, we do not foresee with the current street width that's proposed to be reconstructed, that being a problem.
Okay, so I'm interested in Counselor Pelosi's suggestion that if parking were limited to one side, then the road could be made more narrow, and that might be able to solve the problem in terms of the residents' demands. I'm wondering if such a solution, if we made this street more narrow, would we able to be, would we be able to put in the main without taking the trees?
I believe Mr. McCray addressed that earlier, but Mr. McCray, do you want to just respond to that one?
The water main replacement and the excavation for it requires the removal of the trees, because the water main is immediately below the location of all the trees.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate. Okay, thank you very much.
I'll listen carefully to what you're saying. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to mention, there was a full, fulsome public information session at the Boswick Center for the residents, not only of the crescent, but also of the courts. Virtually every household was represented, it was packed, even staff commented on it, how, how well-attended it was, and the level of interest. And I can say, as sure as I'm standing here, that it didn't matter if they were from the court or from the crescent, they don't want the sidewalk. It should also be pointed out that the sidewalk is on the opposite side of the catwalk. Well, I, I think it's important that we know that the sidewalk proposal is the opposite side of where the catwalk is.
Any other comments from people who haven't spoken yet? Okay, we're going to open up the vote. I'm gonna be coming to you soon, Counselor Morgan. Stay tuned. Thank you very much, Counselor Squire, that'd help us avoid a reconsideration-type vote in the future. This motion is on the committee recommendation, so if you would like the sidewalk to proceed, you would vote no. If you want the sidewalk to be canceled, you would vote yes. So yes, if you want no sidewalk, no, if you'd like there to be a sidewalk.
Can I just ask you, just to repeat that one last time, please?
Yes means no sidewalk, no means sidewalk. Okay, Counselor Morgan.
I, I apologize, I know you're doing the vote, but would we not have to pass another motion to authorize the sidewalk if this fails? Or, so no doesn't really mean the sidewalk, no means we still have to take another action? I just need to be clear.
So the way, the way things are now, the motion is seeking an exemption, so the sidewalk won't happen. If that fails, there'll be no exemption, the sidewalk would go ahead. So I don't think there needs to be another motion. It's already in the project.
Okay.
With that in mind, Counselor Morgan?
Nay.
Counselor Lehman?
Yea.
Counselor Hopkins?
Nay.
Counselor Eller?
Yea.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion is lost, seven to eight.
Okay, thank you, colleagues. I do want to make one comment before we move on to the next item, which is Camden, and there's a sidewalk, and there's trees, tree impacts. What I'm going to encourage everyone to do is to be only focused on the differences there might be between this issue and the last issue we just debated for quite a long period of time, to just focus in on what is different and how that might affect your vote, and we can move along relatively quickly. I'm looking for speakers. First of all, I need a mover. I think Counselor Lehman, you're moving it? As the committee chair, okay? Speakers? Counselor Turner? Counselor Cassidy? Okay, Counselor Turner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'll reiterate the same arguments here. In this circumstance, it is actually a connector between two crescents that are, are just behind it. There's actually a walkway to Camden Crescent Park, Sunnyside Crescent and Shady Lane. The, the alternative is to take a shorter route straight up to Hastings and beyond Hastings, which is a much busier road and less desirable. In this circumstance, it's eight trees, which I, I recognize is a concern for the residents, but routinely, as we're doing street redevelopment, whether the sidewalk or not, we, we have to remove trees and replant them. I don't see compelling arguments here for departure from the council policy, which for all the same reasons I argued before, are quite well-founded. I think there's also one other point to make that I wish I'd made earlier, but I'm glad council heeded that, is that we represent a constituency larger than one block. We represent a constituency of communities, and we represent the city. And often, the, the ones that, that are speaking when we talk about sidewalks, speak to the ones that will see their front yard affected, but we don't hear from the community more writ large, and the ones who transit that neighborhood. writ large, and the ones who transit that neighborhood. So we have to, have to keep all constituencies in mind, not just the one.
Counselor Cassidy?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Actually, this is completely different from the other one. And Camden Crescent is not, is not a walking route. The, the walking path that comes from the Masonville neighborhood, and I speak from good authority, this is my neighborhood, and I walk in this area all the time. So, and I take that footpath. The direct path from this Stony Brook neighborhood to the Masonville neighborhood is through this footpath onto Amberwood, which has a sidewalk. Amberwood is a very short, dead-end street. It ends at the footpath, and when you're coming either direction, you walk on the footpath, or you walk on the sidewalk on Amberwood, and you continue to the sidewalk on Hastings Drive. There are eight trees on the south side of the street where the sidewalk would, would go in, and there are eight trees that would be removed, eight out of approximately 10. So it doesn't sound like a large number of trees, but it's virtually every single tree on that side of the street. The people asked me, should we do a petition? And I actually said, no, you should not do a petition. I think they did end up doing a petition, but I can't, I don't know for sure. I advised them not to do a petition. It is not a route in any way, shape, or form to any kind of destination. There is a park behind, right adjacent to this footpath. It's not a park, it's a green space that exists all over London, those little green space areas that, that are between two, two backyards. I guess we can't build in those areas sometimes because of flooding or other reasons, so this is not really a park. People don't go to that, to this green space that's identified on a map as a park. It's not a park. The other, the other thing is, this is a large project. It's not just Camden Crescent. The roads are being redone throughout the neighborhood. I think there are about three, there are four streets altogether getting roadwork, so there are large, mature trees coming down throughout the neighborhood. They've already started to come down on the other, other roads. When I drive through the neighborhood, I see limbs have been taken down, and all that's left are the trunks. So there are a large number of trees coming down throughout the neighborhood. If we can save eight of these mature trees in the overall neighborhood, and on this one little street that is not a destination street, or any kind of a connector street, then I think that will be a good thing.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very quick. I agree with Counselor Cassidy. This, this is a much different situation. I've actually been in that part of Ward Five myself. I've been on the street and seen it with my own eyes. I think we'd be doing a huge disservice to the community to take down those trees for the sake of a sidewalk, because it's not, there is no destination on this road. I agree fully, and that's why it's important that the Ward Councilors bring those voices to these meetings. So I appreciate her doing that. I'll be supporting this one. There are times when, when we have to balance competing factors, and mature trees, trees that are 30, 40, 50 years old are not easily replaced by new plantings. Particularly, as we're looking at situations around our climate, we do have to balance those two things, and sometimes we've got to let the environment win.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to be opening the vote. I'm going to be coming to you soon, Counselor Morgan. Again, following the advice of Counselor Squire, if you vote no, you're in favor of the sidewalk. If you vote yes, you're in favor of an exemption for this street where there would be no sidewalk. So yes means no sidewalk, no means there will be a sidewalk. Counselor Morgan?
Yea.
Counselor Lehman?
Yea.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yea.
Counselor Hillier?
Yea.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Heard that, yes, okay.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 12 to 3.
Okay, I know I had a bit of a joke there about not having to stand, Counselor Lehman, but I bet you're happy now. Okay, that brings us to the Audit Committee. Counselor Van Holst, I wonder if I could call on you as the vice chair of the committee to present the committee's report.
Most happy to present this report. I can put the, in, the entire report on the floor, noting that in 4.9, we decided to not extend the, our internal audit service for an extra year, and for, for the reason that in this way, we won't have to hire both an internal and an external auditor in the same year. So it's staggering those RFPs to make things a little more, more easy.
Thank you. I just look for discussion on any of the items in the Audit Committee report. Looking on the call, I don't see any hands. Okay, we're going to be opening up the vote on all those items. We're coming to you soon, Counselor Morgan. Counselor Morgan?
Yea.
Counselor Lehman?
Yea.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yea.
Counselor Hillier?
Yea.
Mayor Holder?
Yea.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you very much, Counselor Van Holst. I'm just going to look to the clerks to make sure we're following the newly changed order. And looking at deferred matters, there appear to be none. Now I'm in inquiries, so I'll just look to see if there are any inquiries. Looking on the call, put your hand up if there's anything. Counselor Saleh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a quick question. I know, I didn't get a notice to Sandra, I know she, but I think she's here remotely as well, right? Great, I know I had a conversation with her, and I think she provided me some information when I asked about London Middlesex Housing Corporation, specifically kind of what we're doing for those residents there, and I think it was some, some good information that was worth sharing, so she's hopefully able to repeat that information. So I'll ask her to do that through the chair.
Ms. Datersbeer, if you could weigh in from the phone.
Through the chair, definitely happy to share that information. I'm hoping you can hear me. London Middlesex Housing Corporation and all of our other social housing providers provide rent that is geared to their income, to individuals' income. If an individual experiences a loss in income, their rent can be recalculated. London Middlesex Housing Corporation has indicated that the minimum rent, which is a provincial legislative number, is $85. If individuals are experiencing loss in revenue, loss in income, they can reach out to the housing corporation, and they can reach out to other social housing providers as well to have a discussion about that. The organization, London Middlesex Housing Corporation, is not doing rent reviews at this point in time, and as we know, landlords are generally not acting on eviction notices at this point in time because they're prohibited from doing that.
Counselor, thank you. I have Counselor Turner with an inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Further from Ms. Datersbeer, if I might, I was wondering if I might make an inquiry with respect to how the city is going to support efforts to support isolation for people experiencing homelessness and who are presumptive cases of COVID during this period, and what measures are also being taken with respect to the $200 million provincial fund to support those receiving social services.
Ms. Datersbeer, if I could go to you on the phone.
My apologies there. And through the presiding officer, I have a fair number, a fair amount of information to provide for you. The city has, as so far, secured about 100 hotel rooms for individuals who are in shelters who are deemed to be COVID-vulnerable, and so we are in the midst of moving individuals from shelters to create social distancing. With respect to Counselor Turner's question about isolation space, at this point in time, we've secured approximately 31 spaces for what we would call non-COVID-19 symptomatic individuals. So they're not symptomatic at this point in time, but they're susceptible to being that way. We've secured them at a motel. We are working right now to find and support organizations to help us provide the services to those units. So they're not operational right now, we need to find the staffing to support them. We've also secured 27 rooms for probable or positive COVID-19 homeless individuals. Again, we are working with agencies in the community to provide the supports. With respect to the funding, and just let me move to that, with respect to the funding as it relates to the money we receive from the provincial government, just before council's meeting this afternoon, we received an update as well. We know that the emergency social assistance funding that we're going to receive from the Ministry of Children, Community, and Social Services is intended to give us greater flexibility in this current situation. It will take away some of the requirements that we have currently with the program, and is intended to allow us to provide emergency assistance to vulnerable interians. We will be able to support people more quickly. The discretionary benefits cap that we have in place has changed, some of the rule changes, including extending the length of period of time for which an administrator may provide emergency assistance from 16 to 48 days. So that's an example. There are a number of others that I'm, changes that I'm prepared to share with council, and I might wish to do that through an email or otherwise.
That's through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Datersbeer. Any other inquiries, colleagues? I'm looking on the call as well, if you have an inquiry. Okay, I'm not seeing any. I believe that takes us to emergent motions. Okay, thank you to colleagues who indicated in advance that there are emergent motions coming. There's one that was in the original package, and there's one that's on the added. Hopefully, everyone has seen both of those. I'm going to just go to Counselor Saleh, who brought the first emergent motion forward. As you know, there's a couple of things we need to do here, so go ahead, Counselor Saleh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll just look to the clerk, do you need me to read out the motion to ask for leave at this time, or could I just indicate that I'm asking for leave to be able to bring forward the emergent motion?
I think indicating you're asking for leave is sufficient. Everyone on the call understands he's asking for leave to introduce an emergent motion. I see a lot of nodding. Okay, go ahead.
So I'll move that motion and look for a secondary, I believe.
Counselor Lewis, okay. We're going to open that up for voting. I'll be coming to you soon, Counselor Morgan. Counselor Morgan on leave?
Yea.
Counselor Lehman?
Yea.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yea.
Counselor Hillier?
Yea.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Counselor Saleh on the substantive motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just so it's clear, I'll just, I'll read the motion, and there's some changes to the recent, to the most recent motion that maybe members of the public had an opportunity to see as well. My colleagues had an opportunity to see the circulation from the secondary Counselor Morgan with just the updated language, so I'll read that, and I'm sure Counselor Morgan will touch on that in his comments. So that the following emergent motions be approved, that following actions be taken with respect to the interests and penalties related to unpaid property tax installments, the civic administration be directed to take all necessary actions to waive interest and penalties for unpaid interim 2020 property tax installments that come due March 31st, 2020, for a period of 60 days, and subject to the approval of I above the city clerk be directed to bring forward introduction at the next meeting at the municipal council, the necessary bylaw to amend, bylaw 88, being the, being the property tax collection bylaw to implement above, and it being noted that the action would not apply to payments already set up through pre-authorized payments and post-dated checks to be cashed on March 31st or property tax accounts being paid by financial institutions from the property owner's mortgages payments. Supplementary taxes due on March 31st, 2020, and April 2020 for the years 2018 or 2019, or to any errors that are round prior to the March 31st interim installation due date. And I'm sure if I missed anything, Counselor Morgan will touch on that, and I'll put that motion on, and I'll leave my further comments to the end, but I will say, you know, I'm very thankful to have the opportunity to have reached out to Mayor, as well as Deputy Mayor Helmer and Counselor Morgan, who I was able to connect with while he was on his commute. Sorry, one sec. And apologies, and the remainder of the motion is that the following actions be taken in respect to interest and penalties related to unpaid property tax installments, civic administration be directed to take, sorry, one sec.
Let's go to the clerk to just read out the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The B part is that the civic administration be directed to take all necessary actions to waive interest and penalties for unpaid water and wastewater billings for a period of 60 days, and the civic administration, and C, the civic administration be directed to take all necessary actions to defer all community improvement plan loan repayments on an interest-free basis for a period of 60 days commencing March 25th, 2020, and D, the civic administration be directed to report back to the appropriate standing committee on the potential impacts, costs, and next steps with respect to further options that may be available to assist taxpayers, including the deferral of the June 30th tax installment.
Thank you, clerk. Apologies, I had some technical difficulties on my screen. So that being said, I'll just wrap up by saying I'm glad that our community was one of the first communities to really have this conversation and this suggestion put out there, and we really were leaders in kind of bringing this forward. Hopeful that this will pass today unanimously, so I'll leave my comments for now.
I have Counselor Morgan. I assume since you indicated so in the letter that you're seconding, so I'll go to you.
Yes, I am happy to second this. I think most of this is fairly clear from the item that colleagues would have seen previously. The, the difference is that it's been extended to 60 days. I think that that's a more functional period in the short term, and that the, the other additional directions, because we're at 60 days, were unnecessary, because civic administration will be able to report back, so there's no need to provide them any sort of authorization to take further action, because they will be able to report back to council, which is the new Part D, which I think is a very important component for this council, because that's the direction that's going to say, report back to our standing committee on the potential impacts, costs, and next steps with respect to further options that may be available to assist taxpayers. I think it's really important that we take some immediate action, but that we have a robust debate as a full council in consultation with our constituents on what steps we want to take further to that. Really, the medium term is probably going to be the term where people are going to start to feel the, the financial pressure most, and so that report back, I think, will be an important discussion and debate that all of council can have together, and that we can, we can decide a direction to move together. But I support Counselor Saleh's, you know, short-term actions, and encourage everybody to support us getting some information on other actions we could possibly take together as a council. The, the final thing I'll mention, which I mentioned when I did a little bit of media on this, is we will have to realize that there will only be so far that the municipal council can go and the municipality can go. We can't run operating deficits. We have to collect taxes to cover our expenditures, and so really, the, the longer-term, more meaningful support for Londoners will need to come from the provincial and federal governments. That being said, I do believe there are steps the municipality can take to ease the pressure and the burden, and, and do that in a responsible way from a budgeting perspective as well, and I'll look forward, if this passes, to that subsequent debate that we will have when staff bring back those measures, and I also look forward to colleagues' comments on this tonight as well.
I have on the list Counselor Squire next, then Counselor Lewis, Turner, Kayabaga. So let me know if you want to be on the list. Go ahead, Counselor Squire.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I'm very supportive of this motion. The things that I like about it, first of all, I think it provides some immediate assurance to people that really had to be done quickly with regard to the March 30th payments, and I think that's going to be appreciated, and this, this motion was provided in advance, so we all had a chance to, to look at that. I think it's important also that it be messaged clearly. The one thing I've learned from being Chair of LTC is that every time you do something, people start asking you questions about what other decisions have you made, and why don't you make this decision? Why don't you do that? And that's why I think Part D is so important. People have to clearly understand that we're going to take the time to decide this as a council, and I think no matter what situation we're in, whether it's an emergency or not an emergency, it's always best to try to come up with the best decision. So this motion takes care of the immediate need, but also allows us to get the information that we need to make a more fulsome decision that's going to benefit people of London to the greatest extent we can, but also keep in mind that things such as forgiveness of, of taxes is going to be something that is very, very difficult, if not impossible, just because of financial circumstances. So let's help where we can. Let's make sure people understand clearly what we can and can't do, and I think we'll have an opportunity to. And I think we'll have an opportunity to do that with this motion.
I'm going to go to Counselor Lewis, and I did see Counselor Hopkins and Counselor Lehman. So you're on the list now. Go ahead, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Chair. And through you to staff, I do have a question. And I, first of all, I will echo everything that Counselor Squire just said. I think that this is, and I know that that's a remarkable thing for him to hear me say, but I think that this is within our purview. It's reasonable, it's responding to an immediate need. So thank you, Counselor Salie and Counselor Morgan for hammering this one out. But to our staff, one of the things that I'm already hearing from my residents is that even if you defer it, when the bill comes due, now I'm going to have to pay two bills or three bills potentially, depending on how long the situation lasts. Is it possible, and this may be just covered in part D with a staff report back later, but is it feasible to look at amortizing the the arrears that may accumulate through this deferral over the remaining property tax installments in the course of the calendar year? So that instead of being hit with a lump sum all at once as things restart to normalize, that we can spread that little bit of pain over the remaining payments in the year? So if Ms. Barbone can maybe give us some indication on that?
Let's go to the City Treasurer and see what she has to say.
Thank you through the chair. So absolutely, the intent of that last part of the motion for us to report back is to look at what the possible options are. So certainly, one of the options is to simply defer the due dates for the remaining installments that typically start in June to a later point in time. But as the counselor had identified, that sometimes what that end result could be is that ultimately, you will have some significantly large payments all due at the same time. So one of the things that we will look to bring forward in our report in the month of April will be to look at how we can use our existing pre-authorized payment plan to see if there's another way to look at spreading those over a period of time. Right now, our current program spreads it over ten months of the year rather than the normal installment payments. But there may be some other options that we can bring forward for council's consideration that could utilize that program in a different way and we would bring that forward in our report back.
I would just say to that, great. I'm glad to hear that that's being looked at already. We'll look to see that report back when the time comes because I think that we may have some folks who are seeing a big payment due as things normalize and they return to work. So hopefully, we can find a path forward through that. And I thank you for your work on this. I'll be supporting this.
I'm going to go to Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and thanks to the movers. I think anything that we can do to help Londoners in this time is is very important. I really appreciate the clause D added to this motion. It allows some latitude to staff to explore options, as Ms. Barbone had just indicated. One constituent wrote me and said, in a lot of cases, there are people who pay installments over ten months and there's two months that are off. It would be possible to bring those months forward to the times when people are feeling the most pressure. I said I'd certainly raise that as at council and and this motion in clause D allows that to be heard and considered. As Counselor Lewis identified, being able to amortize the payments and spread those out a little bit more so that they don't get the hit, these are big things. So absolutely, and as we continue to look forward, I am intrigued to hear what other measures we might be able to accomplish that might be able to mitigate those impacts on our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Counselor Kayabaga next.
Thank you. Through you, my questions actually were asked through my colleague Sean Lewis. I just wanted to know what we're going to, how people were going to be able to do these payments after the sixty days. And I also wanted to ask what we're doing, what we're able to do as a municipality to help renters as we are holding off taxpayers, people paying their taxes right now. And I know that the government has announced banks are working with people to to look at different ways of handling mortgages. I was just curious to know what what kind of, what do we have in our jurisdiction to do to help renters who, I know that Mrs. Daterspear said something about evictions and I know that evictions are happening illegally right now. How do we help people who are in those vulnerable situations? We have a lot of renters in our city who are vulnerable to this situation right now and who are possibly not getting any paychecks yet. So I'm just curious to know what are, what's our plan around that right now?
First, I'm going to go to Ms. Barbone, just to see if there's anything on the financial side that the municipality could be doing to benefit renters. And then more broadly, I'm going to go to Ms. Livingston, I think, to just get a response. Okay, Ms. Barbone, just on the financial side.
Certainly through the chair. So on the financial side, there we, unless there's a specific program, and I think Ms. Daterspear's will talk about that in terms of looking at how renters might be supported directly. But I think at, from a financial perspective, certainly, the deferral option, we are supporting every single class. So there's no distinction between the various classes of taxpayers. It's all payments that are due that are not made will be penalty and interest will be waived in that regard. So that's certainly the the direct impact. And obviously, the landlords, we hope, would possibly be able to use that where they're experiencing leniency to support the renters in in that. Although at this time, certainly, the amounts are still due. So I think there's some limited capacity in terms of what the city can do specifically from a financial perspective at this time. But when we come forward, we will certainly work with all of our colleagues in the various service areas to to bring a fulsome report if there's anything else that can be done.
And Ms. Livingston, just on the broader options in terms of supporting renters. Go ahead.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. There are some existing programs, such as our Housing Stability Bank, which are already in place to assist people should they run into difficulty. Ms. Daterspear works with landlords, her team works with landlords. So we would continue to have those relationships as we try and work through this together as a community. I don't have more specific answers than than that in terms of how we're trying to support people right now.
Okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Hopkins. Then I have Counselor Lehman and Counselor Van Mirberg. Go ahead, Counselor Hopkins. You need to unmute.
Thank you for that. I wanted to ask a couple of questions here. And forgive me, I'm a little distracted because I've kind of lost the meeting here, but I'm sure I'll find it somehow. I'll continue with a couple of questions that I have, though. And I'm very, I want to thank the the movers for bringing this emergent motion forward to help taxpayers where possible is is the only right thing to do. I do feel that I've got to ask that question, though, about making sure we've got the contingency in our budget in twenty twenty in particular to not only take care of the tax deferrals, but also we are providing free transit as well. And I just want to make sure that we've we've got that money there that we could carry forward, is my first question.
Okay, so I heard two different questions there. One, I think, was about the cost of the measures that are in front of us right now in the motion. And I get to get Ms. Barbone to respond to that. And then a separate question, which was about, I think, if I'm hearing it correctly, the financial impact of the decisions that the London Transit Commission has made about rear door boarding and the associated fare revenue impacts. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, just making sure we've got the contingencies there that are needed to carry the costs.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. Barbone about the first one. And then I potentially might go to Counselor Squire about the second one. I'm not sure. Okay, Ms. Barbone, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. So every installment is approximately a hundred and thirty million dollars that comes into the city. So certainly, a very, very significant amount that will impact our cash flow. Based on our projections right now, we believe we have enough. And this is where, through some very prudent planning over a number of years, we have our operating budget contingency reserve fund, which will certainly assist us. And with the large amount of reserves that we have had set aside, we are confident that for the next sixty days, we will be in good stead and will be able to manage the deferral. On the the larger budget impact perspective, we are running numerous different scenarios right now. It's a little early to tell, but certainly, in the next couple of weeks, we're crunching a lot of various scenarios and and looking at impacts and what the future program that we bring forward for the possible deferrals in the future and how that might impact it. So I think at this point, based on the decisions that could be made this evening, we're confident we will be okay. We're watching it very, very closely. However, we will bring all that information in terms of impact and what the costs are and what that will look like based on the next phase when we report back to give you a sense of what decisions council could make and what impacts those will have on the city's cash flow and budget.
Thank you for that. And, Mr. Presiding Chair, if I can follow up with my other question to Counselor Squire? Or is it appropriate to ask that question now?
Well, it's been asked. I'm going to go to Counselor Squire. I think he can maybe give you a general answer, but I think more details will be coming later.
So I was waiting for Ms. Barbone to undertake to cover any costs that LTC would incur. And I I I didn't hear that. That's that's unfortunate, but I it's good to see she's doing her job. In terms of the London Transit Commission, obviously, we we made a commitment at least to April fifth to continue on with transit in in terms of people boarding from the back of the bus. And I want to make it clear, people keep saying, oh, you're offering free transit. That wasn't really our intention to make transit free. It just means that when people are boarding on the back of the bus, it would defeat the whole purpose of driver safety to have them go up and and pay. Although I've got to say, from what I heard, a lot of people do come in the back door and then they go right up to pay. So people are honest overall, but it's it's not something we're able to do. Once we get into a full month, and I want to provide general numbers, I mean, you're talking loss revenue of somewhere around one point five million to to two million dollars, which is a significant amount of money. In terms of of the city, that would be something we would have to discuss with the city, obviously. And we have to also, as a commission, decide how long we can provide transit in terms of public safety also. The last issue is that I did speak to a local MP about that and made him clear to that. And he agreed how important transit was at a time like this generally. And so he's well aware of that issue also. So I think that in a general way, that's that's what I can provide.
If I could just follow up and and sort of end with my comments. I think that report back coming to us is is going to be important. And just to let my colleagues know, I'm going to be attending an AMO board meeting through teleconferencing on Friday. And one of the things, talking with staff and and hearing from other municipalities, the need to, I guess, for us as municipalities to have flexibility when we pay our bill to the province. So that's going to be a discussion coming up at the AMO board. I think that's something that we have to sort of lobby the government in in having them understand the flexibility and leeway that we may need moving forward as we give relief to residents as well.
Thank you, Counselor Hopkins. I have Counselor Lehman on the call, and then I'm coming to Counselor Mirberg. Go ahead, Counselor Lehman.
Thank you. A question to staff, when when are we going to hear back and address this again? I've heard April. Is there a specific council meeting that we're aiming for?
Ms. Barbone?
Thank you through the chair. We, because of the urgency, we're certainly looking to try to get it before council as soon as possible. I'm not certain of what the committee dates and what changes might occur in April, but certainly, the middle of April was when we had originally intended to bring forward our tax policy discussion that would then set the the tone for the filing and all of the other components. So we are attempting to bring everything forward at the same time so that you can have a very fulsome view of all of your options and be able to make the decisions accordingly in terms of how you'd like to lay out the rest of the year. So assuming right now that the committee may potentially go forward at the same schedule, I think it's about the April fifteenth. And then depending on where the committee dates, if it's council, on how things move, we would work with the clerk. But we're certainly trying to bring it as soon as possible so that if there's anything that needs to be done before the end of April, we would have time to still action that if that was required.
Okay, thank you. You know, I guess my comments are this, when we're dealing with two issues here. One is a short term and one is a longer term. At some point, we're going to come out of this. And that will be the second crisis before us. Will people have jobs to come back to? What will their personal savings be like after being laid off? Or we don't know how long they're going to be laid off. Is it, are we going to be back to work in two weeks, three weeks, four weeks? There's a great deal of uncertainty out there. We have to look at providing some certainty to our residents, our taxpayers and to businesses that employ those residents. I was originally going to look for amendment to to move this to September thirtieth. People understand, this is a deferral. This is not waiving of property taxes. But there has to be a time of of people to to start saving and replenish their savings while they are laid off from work. When you're laid off from work, you're not collecting your full pay. You're collecting a small percentage of your pay. It's going to take a while for people to get back on their feet. It's going to take a while for businesses to get back on their feet as well. I I I think we need to provide some framework to take some of the uncertainty out of it. And and I'll wait until the next, till we come back. That satisfies me. And I think that's prudent, that we properly allow our finance folks to to present us with options. But I think we have to look at some longer term options so people can say, okay, I'm back to work whenever, on May fifteenth. That gives me three months to save up for what I own, property taxes. I can take care of more immediate things. You know, the banks recognize this. I'm sure with the federal government prodding in the background that to come up with a six-month deferral in in mortgage payments, not one month, not two months, but six months. And again, that that gives people enough time to to plan to get over this immediate home, but also start planning for down the road, how how we get get out of this. See, I see Ottawa has deferred their property tax to to September thirtieth. We have a strong credit rating. A strong credit rating allows you to do things. And this is the time when Londoners who have been wise and finance teams who have been wisely paying for what they use, setting aside money, there is a time to use that tool in the toolbox. And I'll be looking to our folks in finance to see how we can use that strong tool, that strong credit rating that we have to to see us through, to see our residents through and our businesses through this time of uncertainty. So we come out, we come out stronger without inflicting too much damage that I fear that is on the horizon. So I will, I'll be looking for things like that, you know, in in mid-April when when this comes before us again.
Counselor Van Mirberg.
There it goes. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll certainly be supportive of this motion. And I certainly appreciate Counselor Lehman's comments. These are appropriate measures for an extraordinary circumstance. And therefore, I will support them.
Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A couple of questions of clarification that residents have been asking with this already being in the media. I'm glad that they took the opportunity to to reach out. They just would like some clarification around no interest and penalties. They wanted a stronger wording to make sure that all water disconnects would be suspended for all of the city, that the city would not impose NSF charges for the water and tax bills. And if they are currently subscribing to pre-authorized payments, if they'd have an opportunity to opt out of those. So looking for some clarification on those three items.
Hopefully, Ms. Barbone, you heard all three of those questions. If you'd like to take them in order, please.
Yes, so so for the first one, correct me if I miss any. So the NSF charges, if any of the payments that do not go through, there will be no NSF charges imposed. So certainly, we are working, we have a Q and A that will be issued as well and that will be clearly articulated. So if there are any payments that do not go through, even if it was a a check that had been provided to us that bounces, there will be no NSF charges. been provided to us that bounces, there will be no NSF payments there. With respect to disconnections, I believe there will be no disconnections at this point in time. I think Hydro has already issued a few responses in that regard to ensure some clarity, so that certainly will not occur. And the third one, I'm sorry, if you could repeat that again?
It was the path to pre-authorized payments.
And if people, if people can cancel them.
Yes, so with respect to pre-authorized payments, certainly for the month of April, if people, we have been receiving calls in the last few weeks, which normally does occur, that people do call and wish to cancel. That certainly can occur, and we would process that and are processing that as those requests come in. After tomorrow, tomorrow morning, our cutoff will be no longer able to process that for this month, but certainly for future dates, people can call and cancel if that is required.
Thank you for that clarification. My next set of questions or comments, just go around the property tax portion. Had the opportunity to be on the Economic Task Force phone call the other day and had phone calls with local small businesses the other day. Their concerns are 30 days, 60 days, it's not long enough that they're still going to be closed. They're not going to opportunity to even recoup some of that money, that they would really prefer to see a date out into the fall, that this would give them a clarity and hope to plan their business accordingly, that they knew in the front end that they had that leeway from the city. It'd be grateful for their homes as well, because they're also Londoners trying to pay both and looking, so I'll leave those comments with you, recognizing we have a report coming back in April, hopefully sooner the better to make sure that these businesses have a clear direction of how we're willing to be partners with them. Looking for you, for clarification through you to staff, if there is an opportunity or how would we facilitate and encourage the people who actually hold the leaseholds of those buildings, for those residents who have small businesses in London, to actually pass that on to their current renters? What can we do to, us giving a tax break to the people who hold the lease doesn't necessarily help the businesses, but making sure that works its way down to have the intended effect that we're hoping.
Ms. Barbone?
Thank you, through the chair. So certainly, we, there is nothing the city can do to force that to occur. Obviously, we're, by putting that message out and knowing that this will go out there, that in the cases where that can be flowed through, that everyone knows that this is being applied equally. If someone doesn't pay, that they would be able to support their tenants if that's the case. Certainly, within the 60 days, that provides a little bit more of leniency in terms of making sure that they have the ability to pay. What we are still encouraging is people that are able to make payments and are able to do so, that are, you know, not experiencing any financial difficulty, to of course, continue to make some payments as certainly the city still has a number of essential services that we are continuing to pay for. But unfortunately, there's nothing that the city can obligate to make that happen, but we would certainly request that where that is possible, that they would do so.
Thank you very much, Counselor Van Holst. Thanks for your patience. I know you had your hand up earlier, and I missed you, but the clerk made sure I eventually got it. Go ahead.
That's fine, thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor, when we passed the budget, I was concerned what might happen if we encountered less rosy economic times. I had no idea that would happen within a month. So I'm very pleased at how nimble we are in being able to help our residents with cash flow struggles that will be coming up. As your representative on the Board of London Hydro, I've received quite a few inquiries about Hydro billing. And just to provide some more reassurance to people who may be listening online, it might be worth mentioning that the province has removed the mid-peak and off-peak charging for the next 45 days. So residents and small businesses and farms will be paying the lowest price 24 hours a day, and that those savings will show up on your next Hydro bill. London Hydro just basically passes those through, so we don't have control over it ourselves. But that's what's coming from the province, so worth knowing, and that's also reassuring. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just looking to see if there's anyone else on the call who wants to weigh in. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go to Counselor Sli for a brief wrap-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, I know I didn't get a chance earlier, but I really wanted to thank staff, in particular Ms. Livingston, as well as the finance team. I know I messaged Lynn, I think it was early Saturday or Sunday, I can't remember, but she was very receptive, and we worked through it throughout the weekend and as well as talking to my colleagues again, so I wanted to thank them. And I just wanted to reiterate something that the mayor had said in the past, that this is the first step of many steps to come, and I'm sure there'll be more motions to provide economic relief to Londoners, and whether that's further advocacy, just rest assured that this council has your back.
Okay, we're going to be going to voting. Counselor Morgan, get ready. Okay, Counselor Morgan.
Yay.
Counselor Lehman?
Yay.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Absolutely, yes. That's a yay.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 15 to zero.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Great to see such support for that. I know it's just the initial step, as Counselor Sli indicated. Unfortunately, I think more is going to be required at all levels of government. I do want to give a sense of where we're headed. I know usually in the council meeting, we have a break for dinner at 6:30. I know that taking breaks at appropriate times is actually a good idea in terms of focusing our mind, making sure we get a little bit of a break. And we are going to take one after this next item. So before we go into closed session and do that stuff, we are going to take a short break, and I'm going to look for a motion to recess. So I'd like to deal with this additional business here, the disposing of bag garbage by London residents. This is brought forward by Counselor Lewis. I'm going to go to you to introduce it and then get a seconder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, of course, as with the earlier, I'm seeking leave to introduce the following emergent motion related to giving direction to our administration for the residents of London to bring bagged garbage to the environmental depots at no charge until May 4th.
I saw Counselor Van Holst seconding the motion for leave, yeah? Okay, we're going to open that up for a vote. Counselor Motion on the motion for leave?
Counselor Motion, I say yes.
So that happens when we don't take breaks. Counselor Lehman?
Yes.
Counselor Hopkins?
Yay.
Counselor Hillier?
Yes.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote, and the motion carries 15 to zero.
On the substantive motion, Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that civic administration be directed to make the necessary arrangements to waive the $1.50 per bag fee for disposing of bag garbage by London residents at the City of London's Enviro Depots until May 4 of 2020. I believe Counselor Lehman has indicated to me by email that he would be happy to be my seconder on this. Colleagues, I just want to give you really quickly some brief rationale on this. I've now heard from 19 Ward 2 constituents about their concern about the amount of garbage that's unfortunately accumulating at home because they're not at work, they're not at school. Honestly, there was a feeling that perhaps things would be starting to get back to normal now, and they spent March break doing arts and crafts and now have macaroni art in the garbage on top of all the extra Lysol wipes and things like that that they've been using through this period. We've got families with children at home who are using diapers at home, and they're not in their daycares and things right now, so those things are accumulating as well. I did have a chat with our staff, and I certainly understand that we've got lots of pressure on our curbside collection right now in terms of being able to meet the need for current staffing levels. This is a unique situation, and so while I know that many Londoners would like to see just the curbside bag limit lifted, I think this is an appropriate first step. We're going to ask Londoners, if they have some extra garbage, you're going to need to pitch it in and help us get it to the appropriate location, but we're not going to charge you for dropping it off there at this point in time. This is just for bag garbage. This is not, go out and bring us your old couches, your old toilets, whatever, to the Enviro Depots. This is just for bag garbage, and it's to recognize that right now households are in a little bit of an unusual circumstance that might put them over the three-bag limit.
I'm just going to check with Counselor Lehman. You were mentioned as a seconder, yeah? You're okay with that? I'm going to go to Counselor Sli. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I support this, you know, usually I try to, you know, encourage folks to limit their waste, but I recognize even, I recognize here, our staff has been putting out communications to remind people to not flush wipes and things like that. So I know that is happening, and that's happening in many other communities. So I think in the interim, this is a great solution to ensure that we don't have any additional issues with our sewage throughout our city and having to face that while we're in the midst of this crisis.
I'm going to go to Counselor Lehman, then I'm going to go to Counselor Squire. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think I support this because, you know, we're under temporary changes in how we live, and I think Hydro, applaud Hydro for recognizing that and changing the daily rate, usage rate. And so I think this goes along those lines. I also think it allows Londoners to participate in the solution by not putting out at the curb for, you know, our garbage collecting team, but taking the extra amount of garbage that is incurred at home, which would normally be spread abroad in our daily lives where we happen to be, to our collection depots. So, yeah, I hope you support this.
Counselor Squire.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm certainly torn on this motion for a few reasons, and I go back to what I said earlier about doing something comprehensive. My concern would be that if we're going to have a continual motions being brought about, let's provide relief in this area, let's provide relief in this area, let's provide relief in another area, I want to be assured that we're getting at something that is at the core of what we need to do right now in this particular situation. I'm not convinced, I have to say, that this is one of those situations. I have not heard from a single resident about concerns about garbage. Certainly, I've had a lot of emails from constituents about things they would like us to do in these circumstances, and some of them are not doable from my point of view, and I try to discuss with them why we can and can't do things. So what I'm looking for, I suppose, is staff analyze proposals going forward as to things that we can do that will provide the most bang for the buck in terms of providing relief to people in the City of London. I'm not satisfied that this is one of them, and I think if you made the argument to say, well, let's do everything we can right now without analysis, I think we may not do the best job that we could. So I'm still up in the air about this. I understand the intention. It's not something I've heard very much about. I'm hoping as we move forward, as we are going to get with the tax relief, we're going to get more comprehensive information from staff that's coming to committees and to council about things that we can do that will provide the most relief.
I have Counselor Hopkins next on the call, and then Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Lewis, for bringing this forward. I find any motion that any counselor will bring forward these days, I want to support. I want to support Londoners and give them the relief they need. So I too am sort of torn and would like to, I guess, hear back from staff a little bit in terms of can our depots handle us going and dropping off, or what's the process? Because I've not heard concerns here at all, so I was kind of surprised that this motion was going forward. Happy to support any relief that Londoners need, but I just would like a little bit more information that I would like as a counselor to understand why we should be doing this. You know, one of the things I am trying to practice is physical distancing. So are our depots staffed and fully operational to kind of deal with this onset? I guess would be the first question that I would have.
I think Doug McCray, if I could call on you to answer that one?
Mr. Chair, the, we're certainly agreeable to the initiative. We recognize that in the current situation with the community centers closed and City Hall closed, there's greater difficulty buying bag tags for those bags beyond the three-bag limit. And, you know, eliminating the cost for bag garbage drop-off at the Enviro Depots is manageable with current resources and can also support physical distancing by eliminating the financial transactions at the Enviro Depots. So we feel it's manageable, and we can monitor physical distancing at those sites.
Okay, thank you for that. I think that's important to hear, that staff can operate and manage for now, and I'm not sure how long this will go on for. And with the motion, when, how would we sort of end the free bag limit? Or is, will that have to be sort of brought back to us to start charging again? Just want a little bit more information, how Counselor Lewis sort of proposes how, you know, how we kind of end the program?
The motion is suggesting that go till March, or sorry, May the 4th.
May the 4th?
Yeah, May the 4th, and then we'll have to reconsider at that point.
That is helpful as well, so I'm generally supportive. It's pretty hard not to say no to this motion, especially if, because of staff's response as well.
Counselor Pelosi.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Holmer, and thank you to Counselor Lewis. We've had long conversations about this, as the landfill is in Ward 12. I personally have not heard from residents about this concern, certainly lots of other concerns, and just the ones who are always concerned about the three-container limit, always wanted more than three containers. The concerns that we've had as well in conversation is what about the residents who don't have transportation to get to the landfill? Not everyone's privileged enough to have access to a vehicle to get all the way out there, and it is a way out there. And we discussed if it's, if we're already charging a fee and they're physically there anyways, like how to still capture that fee while staff are trying not to handle money. But if we allow more bag limits at the curb, staff might not have the capacity physically to keep picking up all the extra garbage, especially if staff are injured or end up getting sick, like we just won't be able to keep up with it. For myself, I believe this is an excellent opportunity to reevaluate your waste and what we're putting out. Three containers is, depending on what size garbage bag you use, is like nine garbage bags worth of garbage. For many, a lovely neighbor will let you put a bag here or there if you find yourself over. Personally, I'm a family of five. I recognize my kids are no longer in diapers, but even when they were, we used reusables. And even now, with five people, we're still not even filling one container. And I know it changes slightly different, depending if you get the spring cleaning bug early because you're shut in. But for me, I'm really questioning this one, if we're taking on more than we really need to do at this moment. In listening to my colleagues' comments, but at this point, I'm not leaning towards supporting it.
Looking to see if there's any other speakers. Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor is at the Enviro Depot a couple of weeks ago, just dropping off one of the orange bags for the pilot. And so it's very simple, our staff just direct you to where you need to go, and you put that in on your own. So it is certainly, I suppose, a hygienic way to do it. We don't really need to interact with staff. As a matter of fact, I suppose if someone were to know that their household had a case of COV, COVID-19, then they might, they might want to do that on their own initiative, and that would, as a, that would be a grace to our garbage collection staff.
Any other discussion, colleagues? Just before we go to you for a wrap-up, I did have a question for Mr. McCray. I wonder if you could just describe what it looks like for residents. If this were to be changed, what garbage collection will look like? Because I know we have some exemptions to the container limit that are coming up in the period we're talking about anyway, and I wonder if you just described what options are going to be available to people between now and, say, May the 4th.
On a garbage collection at the curb standpoint, we are currently maintaining, uh, our standard service levels. The annual, uh, increase, temporary increase in the bag limit, uh, is scheduled for April 14th. So that is a, uh, an annual opportunity for people to place an extra bag at the curb. Besides that, it's, it's operations as normal.
I just wanted to emphasize that there is an exemption period coming up for the three-container limit. It's not bags, and sometimes it is referred to it as containers, and they can be quite large. And as Counsel Pelosi pointed out, um, I'm gonna go to Counsel Lewis to just wrap up briefly, and then we'll open it up for a vote.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And before we vote on this, colleagues, I just wanna to circle back to a few, uh, key things that I hope you'll take into your decision-making here. Nobody expected to be in this situation, and we've been in this situation, you know, give or take for about 10 days now. Uh, so families have not had a chance really to adjust and adapt to better ways to reduce, reuse, recycle, which I hope they certainly take advantage of over the next little while. Uh, April 14th is still a ways away. We have been encouraging people, uh, through messaging, uh, you know, and this has been across broad sectors, saying, you know, businesses are still open. We've had restaurants go to takeout, uh, that would normally be dine-in, and encourage people to continue supporting the businesses that are still out there serving customers. And so people have done that, and now they have extra takeout containers at home, or perhaps a delivery driver from one of the services has delivered some of that takeout for them. Now you've got containers that have been handled by multiple people. You may wanna just get those out of your home at the earliest opportunity. Most people can store them in a garbage container outside. Not everybody has that option, though, so, uh, and to the nine-bag concern, um, I certainly agree with Counsel Pelosi, that, you know, somebody who's putting out nine bags, uh, you definitely need to adjust your waste. Uh, but a lot of us only use bags. We don't have the big plastic containers, and so the three-bag limit is very much a three-bag limit. So this is a short-term measure to recognize, and, and May the 4th is the proposed, uh, end date for this, to recognize that families need some time to adapt to the situation, and that we actually have a situation where bag tags are not readily available. Uh, and I would rather we let them drop the bags off for free at our EnviroDepos on one trip than to go to the EnviroDepos, have a cash transaction with our staff, then go back and tag bags to put out at the side of the road to ask our curbside delivery people to pick up anyway. Uh, I think it just makes more sense to do it this way, and I know it's still not gonna be convenient for every resident. Not everybody's gonna be able to get out there. I think it's very much important that all of us, including the people here and on, on the video chat at home, communicate the value of being a good neighbor and sharing your curbside space. I know I certainly don't put out three bags anyway. Most weeks I'm lucky if I put out one, so if a neighbor needs that space, I'm happy to share that, but that's not the, the reality for folks in some neighborhoods. So this just provides one more option, uh, that will allow us to provide a little flexibility as families adapt to this situation.
We're gonna open up the vote, and I'll be coming to Counsel Morgan soon. Okay, that's up on the screen. It's to make the necessary arrangements to waive the $1.50 bag tag for disposing in the EnviroDepos until May the 4th. I guess May the 4th be with you. Counsel Morgan.
Yay.
Counsel Lehman.
Yeah, anyway, yay.
Counsel Hopkins.
Yay.
Counsel Hillier.
Yay.
Mayor Holder.
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion passes 11 to 4.
Okay, uh, I did say we were gonna look to take a bit of a recess before we deal with, uh, the closed session, um, in our meeting. Um, we do have bylaws remaining. I think it's probably best if we take a recess now. I'm just looking to see, well, we're gonna vote on it if you insist, Counsel Sully, and that'll take longer than just taking a recess. I mean, that's one option that's in front of us. Or we could just have a recess. So I'm gonna suggest 10 minutes. Is there someone who wants to take a 10-minute recess? Looks like we're gonna have to vote on it. Counsel Lewis? Counsel Pelosi? Any discussion? No? Okay, we're gonna open up the vote. I'm coming to you, uh, Counsel Morgan, on the 10-minute recess.
Uh, yes.
Counsel Lehman.
Yes.
Counsel Hopkins.
Yes.
Counsel Hillier.
Yes.
Mayor Holder.
I heard four yeses. They've changed the language, yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 12 to 3.
We will be back here at 7:50 sharp. That's when we're gonna start the meeting again. Okay, we're gonna be resuming the meeting in one minute, so, uh, that's just a one-minute warning. We are actually gonna resume the meeting. Okay, it's 7:50, and as I said, we're gonna resume the meeting. Uh, thank you for, uh, taking a little bit of a break there. Uh, we're coming back to, um, we have bylaws left, um, so what we're gonna do here, I've got corn. Yeah. Um, and I noticed that we have all the folks on the video back. There's Counsel Morgan. Counsel Morgan, we just resumed the meeting. Uh, we're gonna get into bylaws. We're gonna do all the bylaws except for the confirmatory bylaw, which is the first bylaw, so we're gonna leave that one to the end. Then we're gonna go into closed session. We're gonna stay in this room for closed session. We're gonna continue the teleconference during closed session. A limited number of staff are gonna stay on the call for the closed session. Then when we're done, we're gonna come back and, and deal with the confirmatory bylaw and the three readings. Um, so, uh, in terms of the bylaws, with the exception of that first one, um, do I have a mover for that? Counsel Sully, second, or Counsel Van Hols? We're gonna open that up, and I'm gonna be coming to you, Counsel Morgan, soon. Okay, so this is first reading of Bill Number 112 to 134 inclusive. Counselor Morgan?
Yay.
Counsel Lehman?
Yay.
Counsel Hopkins?
Yay.
Counsel Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the vote, closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you. Uh, a seconder for a mover and a seconder. Counsel Van Muregan, Counsel Van Hols for second reading of Bills 112 through 134. Any discussion on these bylaws at second reading? Don't see any on the, uh, call. Okay, we're opening up for vote. Counsel Morgan?
Yay.
Counsel Lehman?
Yay.
Counsel Hopkins?
Yay.
Counsel Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 0.
Third reading of the bylaws, Bill 112 through 134. Mover. Counsel Van Hols, seconder. Counsel Pelosi. We're gonna open that up. This is third reading and enactment. Counsel Morgan?
Yay.
Counsel Lehman?
Yay.
Counsel Hopkins?
Yay.
Counsel Hillier?
Yay.
Mayor Holder?
Yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you. That deals with all the bylaws except for the confirmatory bylaw. Um, I would like to look to move into closed session now. We have one item listed on the agenda as the reason to go to closed session. That's about the security of the property of the municipality local board. I see a mover, Counsel Kaia Baga, seconder. Counsel Pelosi.